All right, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go to two, is there any amendments to the agenda needed?
I have one amendment, yes, to sign bank documents under new business, maybe add an F if that's okay.
Any other changes needed? Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to add signed bank documents under new business, F.
Is there a second? Okay, a motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay to amend the agenda to include bank documents under section 11F. Or, yeah, 11F, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries. We had an executive session for town clerk MOU on the agenda. Motion for that, or?
There should be.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session under one DSA 313A3. Personnel contract discussion? I'm just trying to...
Employment evaluation or public officer employee.
Okay.
Is there a second? Okay. No second on the motion, is there? Board wanting to discuss that in open session?
I think it belongs in open session, it's a voted on article and it's a public official. And I think if we, if we go to executive session, what we're, we're kind of trying to, it will appear as if we're trying to sweep up public officials, pay under the rug. I don't think that's the right idea.
Any other? Joe, do you want to explain kind of the process unless Danny doesn't?
I guess I will check my facts and come back in two weeks because I believe that I can meet under, I have been back and forth because I didn't want to. But I have been told that you can meet in executive session because it will then be discussed outside of, of an executive session. We can, we can drag this on, just move on. Go back and, out of my statute of hands.
Glenn?
And the reason for going, I understand what you're saying Bob, but my, my sense, the reason for going into executive session is we, my understanding of the statutes are that we can't make any decision, but sometimes having some discussions that aren't, I don't know, we have to, we have to make a decision out in the public and to meet the statutes, but when you're dealing with personnel or contract discussions, those are sometimes better served in executive session.
There's one other point that should be, if you read the law, the way the law is read, it says that, that the, that the compensation for the town clerk is voted on by the people. The people voted for the budget, the line item for the, that particular, for the town clerk is thirty-seven thousand. I don't think we have any wiggle room at all.
Yeah, wiggle.
My, my, I'm not arguing wiggle room on compensation, but there's other things to be discussed besides just the compensation, is my understanding.
But if you read state statutes, there's a lot of things that we don't have to get because of the fact that she is elected official.
Again, I guess I'm going to turn to you, Joe, to say, I'm hearing people say what the law is, but we, I take it, we've talked to our attorney, we've talked to the Vermont League City and Towns, and they both counsel us, and I don't pretend to be wiser than the people that are, that were paying to counsel us, saying executive session is appropriate, so, again.
Rich, do you have any thoughts on?
Not at this time.
So at this point, because of the lack of a second, we won't be going into executive session. We can put it on the agenda for a discussion, an open session on the next meeting, if you'd like.
I'll check what the powers that be, because I'm pretty sure I was told by my group that I couldn't intersect this session. And I really think it needs to be for several reasons.
All right, so we will table until the next meeting? Is that the consensus? I don't want to move forward if you guys are...
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second, is there?
Second, I guess.
A motion by Jay and seconded by Bob to table the town clerk MOU discussion until the next meeting?
And tabled until we get further clarification of what we can and can't do.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I just want to say I have a hard time when we pay attorneys and we, we have, we have the people we rely on for advice and we pick and choose when we want to take it.
I'll, I'll use an old farmer's. They used to tell, he used to tell me, you let the lawyer do the lawyer and you do the thinking.
I, I don't think you're thinking.
I think I am.
So.
Well, I mean, everything's been written, oh, you're pretty close, but it's not gotten in letters. And everything's been highlighted on what the, what the facts are, what the standard procedure is for this type of thing, so. Unless I see someone that were, tell us we have to do executive session, I have to agree with Bob because I believe it's, she has a vote, they are a voted, they're voted in by the people. And it would be no different than us going to executive session to give ourselves a raise.
Exactly.
And so there's no difference, I don't feel, it's, if it was an employee of the town, it's a different story. But this is an elected official.
All I'm trying to do is get clarification for, if we put this on the agenda next time, we can put it on the agenda and have the same result we just had, which is no discussion, if that's...
Well, let's, let's get the, let's get some clarification.
That's all I'm looking for is clarification.
I, I don't think it's a must, I think it's an ability to.
You can.
You can.
And if, and if we decide, and if we decide we can, but we decide not to, then make a motion right now, get a second and vote it in, I can vote no and we can move on. If that's what you'd like to do.
Well, we, we don't know what, what her arguments are. So it's kind of hard to vote something through when you don't know what, what, you know, what she thinks she's, you know, what she feels she is entitled to. And I, I just feel that we should hear her side of the story, or what she feels. And, I mean, I'm reading what's in here from statutes. And so, that's all I'm going on, okay?
If she, if, now, basically, I assume she wants to meet in executive session to discuss what she wants or don't want, or whatever. She doesn't want that to be public at this point in time, I assume, from what I've been gathering.
But it's the board that has to decide whether...
But if we make a decision, we will come out of executive session and we have to make public what was agreed upon. That's why when someone says that it looks like we're doing something on the table, there's nothing under the table.
Well, yeah.
I, I look at this as, as a request from a person who was elected that said, I really would be more comfortable talking to you in executive session than first, before a decision, and then have an open discussion, and I hear us saying, we don't think so. And, and so I'm going, I don't know if that's...
I, my feeling is that there's too much stuff in the government that's done in executive session where people don't ever get to hear the whole story. And I think there's a lot of things that goes on, and, like I said, if it wasn't an elected official, something different. But I feel that's why we have union contracts, that's why we go in executive session for them.
I just don't want Joe to put it back on the agenda if we're not going to go in executive session.
And I feel that we should have a clarification on what we have to do, what we can do and can't do, and go from there. And then, next, next meeting, we make a decision.
Okay, and I, and I can support that, Jay.
All right, so I think it was Jay that made the motion, right?
Yeah.
Bob seconded to table for two weeks.
Yep.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes for March eighth? Is there a motion for that?
I'll second it.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Glenn to approve the March eighth minutes?
Johnny, this is for one particular thing on the script?
No, this, this is the last meeting. The one, the other edits are...
We'll do that one next.
Okay, okay, that's a different, this is the one from March eighth, okay.
I, I did make a couple of edits on these, I corrected, Mr. Greeno, I changed, I corrected your name. Just in case you caught that. Mr. Luluk, I corrected Mr. Luluk's name. And, let me see.
That's right, that was our first.
G R E A T O U G H. O U G H.
But it's correcting your, in these...
It's correcting here, O U G H.
There, there were a couple spots, but we fixed it up throughout.
Yep.
And there was another location, we were talking about the treasurer on page six. And whether I misstated or, or not, I don't know, but it said, BLTC stated it was okay. It was actually the Secretary of State that I spoke to, his office.
So you do need that change.
Yeah, it's to proceed.
Okay, other corrections? So I believe it was Bob and then Glenn that seconded. Okay, you're okay with the change? That Joe had? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries for the March eighth. And now the edits from the February twenty-second meeting?
Yep, so I missed a big chunk of that meeting when I was doing the minutes. I totally missed the discussion with the town clerk. And we need to have that in there for, for the audit, for the auditor if he pulls those payroll. So, on page one, you'll see the, the short discussion, and then the motion to pay the former town clerk a hundred and eight hours of vacation pay. And that was the important part that needed to get in.
So we need a motion to approve the edits?
Probably had to come from the two people that were there.
I'll make a motion to approve, are we going to do a separate motion for the Monga Road edit?
Oh, yeah.
What, can we do them both at once?
They do them both at once.
There's a Monga Road edit that needs to be done where Jeff Sheldon abstained from the, from the vote.
From the vote, yeah, and that was changed too.
So with those two changes, I'll make a motion to accept the edited minutes from February twenty-second?
A motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to amend the minutes of February twenty-second to include the town clerk meeting and that discussion, and the section on the Monga Road discussion where select board member Jeff Sheldon abstained from the motion. Other corrections needed? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any close?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, Jay, right, you were...
Yeah, just the fact that I wasn't here and I wasn't part of the discussion, I don't think I should be.
Do you want to abstain or vote no?
I'll abstain from it.
So that motion carries. Appointment with the auditor? Is Josh on?
Josh is not on, he said he would be coming closer to seven-thirty, we're a little ahead of schedule.
Okay, five minutes for public comment? Anybody for public comment? All right?
In our wish list for the Art of Law, the IDV committee had a line in there for storage area. So since then, Jay showed me the bus garage down at the, where the junk garage is. So if we could have just the loose square section, if I could, if the fence off somehow, if we could put our stuff down there, we won't have to climb the stairs. It'll be easy access for us and we'll cut you guys nothing. We'll, we'll put our own, you know, barriers up for it, so I wish you'd please consider that.
There's a lot of room there, there's, could, seems like it could be organized though.
Like, right now, our Christmas trees are all up there. I mean, the town has to take them off because the stairs are so steep.
Unwhile the elevator.
They pile up there, so now we got to go in, you know. And then the rest of our stuff is in the cellar, it's getting all dirty and dusty.
There's what, there's four bays down there, I believe.
There are...
There are three big bays, and then there's the one where the police cars are parked.
Yep, I asked the guys if they could, if they could find a spot. I don't, I don't know if you guys would be happy there. It's, it's cold and dirty and I don't, there's power, but it's, it's a little...
Dirty downstairs.
Well, it's...
Cold upstairs, no heat.
No, I know.
Will the elevator be in by?
Elevator will be finished by July. What? I don't know.
Can we go look at, as a group, can we go look at the IDV and then...
Sure, I mean, they talked to Aaron, I mean, he'll be able to help you out.
Because I don't think he makes a difference.
Yeah, I, I don't have any issue.
If it's better than what you got, and, and it can be, they can make it work. It's not going to, you know, as long as their, their function isn't, isn't screwed up by it.
Yep.
Which I don't think, I know there's a lot of room in there.
I'll call Aaron a little later.
All right, perfect. Anything else, sorry?
Well, there probably could be, but it's all...
Public comment?
Right now.
Uh, anybody else?
I'd be, I'd be willing to look at it, would you, maybe I could give you an idea?
Yeah, that's fine.
That would be great.
Yeah, if you want to. Was that Josh getting online or was that a spam call?
I don't know what that was, Josh, was that you?
They were calling about your warranty.
Yeah, that's, my car warranty, apparently. No, where's Josh?
All right, just let us know when he gets on. Department head reports, police chief?
Um, I put the two-week report in your box to review. I don't like the two weeks, I do them monthly and I'm trying to keep it, keep our track.
I like to...
Whatever your pleasure is, I'll be like this.
I like two weeks, I like the two weeks.
I'm trying to do my best, if I'm not here, it might be a little long, so I'll do my best to get something to you. The only news that is obviously, they kind of converged that, they sent some more, they sent one R B. Today, they asked for taking it all back. Obviously, the town truck got it. We have a, we have a solid suspect, but proving it's going to be difficult. I have some good intel, so to do it, I just don't know if I'll be able to prove it. The same people are on video of pulling. They put a video out of a car they're trying to identify, Officer McDermott actually stopped the car the night before in the traffic stop, and it's the same car, with who they thought it was. So, I'm hoping, I'm hoping with that, at least, we can get them on the pull me car thefts based on our information and maybe roll them over on the leave.
Where are they selling these? I mean, are they going to just local junkyard or?
No, like, they're getting put together and taken out of the area and I can't say.
Yeah, okay.
The state police were here today, we did talk about it. They have a solid lead, they, they have pretty good ideas, we're buying them all, and then they got rid of them and hurt, so. It's multi-agency, Brooklyn Town has a bunch of them, we've been talking to them. I provided some information I got here in Brooklyn Town, which led to the state police. So it's, hopefully, we, but the problem is, it's like drug dealers, if you knock one off, you know, you got five more people out of there, so much more, especially the Fords. For some reason, like, they've only targeted the Fords down the exit line. There's something in the cap that makes it worth more. And then, it was called today that, you know, Rob was telling me that he had heard that now they're puncturing gas tanks also. So with the gas prices going up, expect to see gas, gas drive-offs and stuff increase. Trying to think of what else I got. A lot of fingerprints, we were averaging nineteen or twenty every two weeks, like twenty dollars a pop. Seems to be a pretty good source of income. It's overweight permit season. They're only ten dollars by state statute, unfortunately, it's not a lot of work, but maybe a little more than that. Can't change it. We had the one car accident down on West Street with a town truck, little investigation, it handled. Couple EMS assists. Outside of that, it's been a pretty quiet two weeks as far as, we had three arrests last week, we had six, so. Nothing large happened. If you guys have anything for me to think of, I'm trying to rile everything I can give you.
Yeah, what's the broken glass out in the parking lot? I noticed it when I pulled in.
Not here?
Yeah, the, the spots down towards the crosswalk.
Okay, I'm not aware of it, but I'm kind of up there and maybe up around the glass. Biggest thing, just spent forty minutes in the countywide working group on dispatching. It's all in your box. And they went over the new bill, if you read the bill in, in there that I gave you today, it kind of outlines what they're doing with the eleven million, there's three million for operating, handling for equipment, or vice versa. And it authorizes a, a study of who's going to be in that working groups, two different avenues. And the catch-all at the end is, if neither of them work, the state shall dispatch. So that doesn't seem, it seems like we move forward and then move back. Chittenden County is far ahead, they're ready to pull the switch, to flip the switch and take over their own. But they were working on this prior to the state saying, this is the drop dead date. But right now, they're saying the drop dead date would be January, I think it's July of twenty-four, where the state wouldn't be dispatching for it anymore. It seems like we race ahead, we're going to do this, and then it's backed off. The sheriff has put in a grant for six stations, dispatching stations. He's concerned, doesn't want to go on a revamp of his office, doesn't know if it's big enough. And it sounds like without accounting tax, the sheriff's not interested in doing it because there's no funding mechanism. It's hard to rely on, fair enough, we're going to pay X, and then fair enough, we're not paying X, we're going to go somewhere else. So I don't know if he even wants to get into that funding stream until it's set and how they're going to fund it.
But there's really not any place where we can go, is there? If this stops like this, or what?
Well, right now, you have the city, well, right now, what the state is trying to do is kind of force an entity in the county to take on the property. Killington is interested in taking it, they have space for it, they don't really have anything set up. The sheriff has their own dispatcher now, they have one dispatcher on duty at, when, when they work. They could do it, but they're talking thirty-seven agencies, not counting the fire departments that are already paying Washington Town. So one would be a mouth, that's why he's trying to get grant funding. The city is interested, but hasn't stepped up and said, yeah, I will take it, because they have three console system in their office. They would be the most logical for a county-based system for the sheriffs. I know, they, they met with one of the side judges, the side judges built their space in the county building, in the county court downstairs, maybe. Like I said, Killington, Joe and I talked upstairs hypothetically, if we got that far. But I'm still back on the, there's eleven million, but who's paying the year after that?
Right, yeah.
And I'm going back to the governor, doesn't want any new taxes in peace, well, the way this is getting crammed down my throat, somebody's going to pay.
The number I heard from one of our representatives, the number they've been given is fifty-three dollars a call.
Well, and yeah, I think when you were on the board, not last year, but I can't remember, but I've had that conversation. At one point, the numbers, I think you're familiar, one numbers they gave me was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Well, well, just figure out your calls and, and go at fifty-three and tell us what that's going to be.
Well, that's, the problem is, that was a number they used from twenty eighteen.
Right.
And I said, well, you're counting our overweight permits. So at one point, we had them down to seventy thousand, after, because I would argue a little bit, like, you're, you're starting, like, you're counting cases that the clerk enters for overweight permits and fingerprinting, and the officer did a directed patrol. So I'm thinking like Castleton has sixteen hundred cases, right now, current. We're at seven hundred. But Castleton, so if they go up and they sit on Creek Road, they're starting to direct patrol to document they were in that area. Well, on that math, sixteen hundred times fifty-three dollars, which isn't fair, I mean, they're just being proactive on documenting where they are. And so that's where, when the state initially came out that they were going to charge us fifty-three dollars, well, that was the state police. They were at a hundred and twelve, and I said, you guys are crazy, that's one-third of my budget, it's not going to fly. So I beat them down to seventy, after, we, they went through the cases, we went through the cases and found this. And in eighteen, the big craze for law enforcement was, document more. So that's how we got these large numbers. So, not that we're not documenting, but what I, what we started in twenty-twenty when it came out was, if we're out doing directed patrol, I don't need to call dispatch and say, start a case for this. We have the ability to start our own. So we push back on having each officer, if you do something, start your own case. Dispatch, or somebody you call in and say, I have X a complaint on West Street, and we go down to West Street. I don't need to call the state to start a case, we just go handle it and come back. And that's similar to other agencies, like across the border, they start their own cases. So, I said to the state, let's take, we've done all these changes, we changed the phone system, so it rings in our office first before it kicks over to them, to give us an opportunity to answer the four-five-three-one line, which never rang yet. I said, we've done all these changes to minimize your workload, you need to look at twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty numbers, not eighteen, with the changes that we've made. So I don't have any idea where the money's going to come out, I don't know. The, the problem with fifty-three dollars a call is that forces your guys to nothing. I'm going to be calling to the office. Only take, become reactive, don't be proactive, because, how do I go back? So this month, it was fifty-three times a hundred, because the guys were active. And what happens if you have an active officer, like Sergeant Herbert stops a lot of traffic, you count in all the traffic stops. Heinsburg experienced having fifty-three dollars a call, they hired somebody new, they stopped a lot of cars, and they bankrupted the department one year because of, they were counting traffic stops. So there has to be a, a formula how that works, almost like a catheter. And how do you, you call? I'm just thinking of anything. It's as simple as if you call nine-one-one because my cat's dog can injury, that's a fifty-three dollar call.
Right.
And I've been arguing with them, and the classic example I had to dispatch, and I think I've told you before, was rescue squad got called to Max for a clerk that was having a medical issue. Rescue needed more hands, they called us, can you go up there? I'm like, sure, don't start us a case. No, we'll split this one. This is when I was in the mode, no, don't start a case, we'll go up, see what's going on. We get there, they started us a case anyways, and then they called for Benson First Response. So I called the captain and I said, so, explain us how this works. Am I getting fifty-three dollars, does Fairview Rescue get fifty-three dollars? And now Benson First Response gets a whack fifty-three dollars, because all three agencies went and were all dispatched by that center. They couldn't answer that question. But in theory, a hundred and fifty-three dollar couple now is a hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, that's what this group is working on, is, you know, what's the funding structure going to look like? And I don't have those answers. So what they were talking about was trying to set up a meeting, this is where you guys come in. Brooklyn Town is going to try to host a meeting at their own firehouse within the next month, where you guys send a delegate from the board to go sit. Because us, this working group, have decided, you guys need to have input on this, you can't rely on what I'm telling you. Because, I'm not trying to skew it, but it's better to, if you hear it from me, and then you're sitting there that says, yeah, this is what happened. And then it's easier for two of us to come back and figure out how to plan, if you get where I'm going. So I'm, I'm hoping that meeting comes in and they get a board member to go over and be parties, working discussions, and talk to other select boards on, you know, how do we move forward with this? Is this feasible? And what I talked about two weeks ago is, you guys push your back to your legislators and saying, I don't know if this is going to work. They're obviously talking about having a legislative breakfast, where the, all the county delegation would be invited. And I hope a select member or two, a select board member or two would be invited also, to have all those conversations together and see where this is going to fold, or unfold. So we really won't know until that working group, if you read the bill, I would really suggest you read the new bill that came out, and that's kind of outlines what they're trying to do. And that's kind of outlines what they're trying to do, the best I can tell you. And I will try to keep you, as much as I can on information. It's just there's so much going and it changes one minute, you're focused here and then it's going back. Except that's the first thing I heard was, if this doesn't work, we're back to status quo.
My understanding is the state police don't want, they don't want the dispatch at all.
No, and they don't.
But they've got the, they've got the infrastructure that they lobbied for a few years ago.
When they closed Rutland and they closed Verby, and that was when I, when I testified in front of the House, ways and means of one of the House committees. One of the House reps called the captain out and he said flat out, so let me get this right. Your whole argument to push these back to regional was your exact argument to consolidate.
Right.
And they've now since admitted that it's failed. My argument was take your, take your eleven million dollars back and open the two centers up and see if that alleviates the problem. You know, back to where we were. We didn't have problem in twenty fourteen. When they, these problems are getting hard. It's like moving a business from Rutland and putting it in Pollock and expecting to hire a hundred people. You know, you have Rutland a large population, put it in a little town. There's so many people want those jobs and the job is difficult, but once you exhaust that hiring pool. And then the other problem they're having is those guys get trained, they're going over to Keene, just across the line working for the, they have better benefits in the pay time, so. And that's again what I said two weeks ago, I worry about who are creating this smaller entity. They get good, they go somewhere else and then you start to go revolving the middle. I don't, again, I don't have any answers where this is gonna go. My career, I've seen it come up and I've seen it go and it's back and forth. Again, the state has designed the system that we're living with, not what we asked for, it's kind of what we have. The same thing with county jails, they're gone. They're all state run. Social services is state run. All the services are state run. I don't know how to combat it. I'm gonna get some looking at these tests and be vocal. Try to speak up a little bit. Worst case we go down bike, I don't.
Other questions?
I hope I answer as much as I could and I'll give you as much more as I can.
Years, years ago, a lot of towns did their own, correct?
Brandon had their own. I don't think we, we never had one. Maybe who they would call, I think Andy Brown, they called his house and his wife would tell Andy. Back in the day. But you look at it to staff that alone. It's not feasible for, say, even in our, do like our town, you would eat twenty-four hours a day, you know, four or six people, that's, that's. You know, the regional model works, it's just a matter of how to pay for it. If it's gonna be a countywide, then everybody in the county should pay regardless if you have a police department or it's just that's your service, so.
I just can't, if you can't quite get through my, my head why it's fifty-three dollars a call every day, all day long. When we're, when they're already being paid from somebody, somewhere. Equipment's been already purchased from somebody, somewhere, probably us our taxpayers. And where's that extra money coming into play?
I think it's mostly that's, that's the money you should budget if, if, if they, if we go, if we have to take it on. We, we should figure out fifty-three dollars a call.
Yeah, they were looking at projected that it would cost us a hundred twelve thousand dollars a year. Who's gonna pay for that? I mean, it's not feasible. But that was just on our numbers, not counting your fire and your EMS.
Right.
So.
Well, we're not actually paying right now personally.
No, we have never paid. There's a, there's a state statute somewhere that says the state would pay. I hope the state's turning it out. The only other thing is the commissioner told me they're not gonna take a budget cut. They said that municipals, municipal agencies fire account for fifty to sixty percent of their business. Well, our thought was that your budget should be cut fifty or sixty percent. That money should be allocated to these regional centers. So we're not taking a cut. And that's typical state.
Typical political. Bill, you just put a fifty-three dollar on it just to quantify it for, for what it could cost us.
I'm not, but that's what the, the state figured out what their numbers were.
It's not actually being taxed yet. I understand now, I was.
So now they're talking twenty twenty-four based on that, but I, I don't. The problem here is nobody stepped up to say, um, I'm it and we'll take it. Cause I can't see any agents that I wouldn't want. Like I wouldn't say, yeah, we'll take it. With staffing, we got the same staffing shortages as the states have. You know, they're down sixty percent. Forty percent of their staffing, they're running sixty percent staffing and then COVID come in, so they're hurting. So who works? I mean, you have your own guys in there or me working dispatch on a Sunday night overnight because it couldn't be anybody work. I don't think anybody wants to take on that any unless you already have it. Like the city or the sheriffs already have a system, you already have dispatchers and you're just increasing it.
Okay, other questions?
So it sounds like you're gonna let us know when that meeting is so that we can have someone there and take every opportunity we can to let our representatives know.
Yeah, so the, the first meeting will be.
What you're asking.
Will be Rutland Town, do the work on rules. Select board members from each town come in and then I want to do the presentation and they'll talk and you guys can ask questions. I'm sure you'll have the commissioner there. And then the second meeting would be they're talking about like a legislative lunch or something similar to do at the state house, but it will be with the Rutland Town delegation. So I'll keep you updated on meetings and maybe you guys at some point decide who wants to be that on point, point hand.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Um, if you guys are okay with that, I wanna go back. Josh is back on or is on now for the overview of the audit. Josh? I'm putting you on the big screen, man.
How's everybody?
Good, how you doing?
Uh, well, thank you. I apologize for being there in person. I was at Klein all day and just rolled. Uh, just made it back home from North, so. Yeah, but happy to be able to go over the audit with you for twenty twenty-one. So I'm on the big screen, so if I share my screen, you all will be able to see my screen too. Is that right?
Yep, should be, yep. There you are.
Um, Joe, right now it says host disabled participant screen sharing. Can you enable me?
Uh, I think I did. Try that one.
Oh, there we go. Got it. Perfect. Excellent. Okay. Do you all see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, first thing, uh, I'm just gonna go over the audit, the financial statements, how they're, how they're organized. And then I will hit some of the major schedules. I'll go over the management letter. And then we can go over any questions you guys have. If you have questions while I'm going through things, please feel free to holler them out. Um, I hate to hear myself talk. So first thing, as far as our audit process, well, first, RHR Smith and Company. We've been doing your audit at least on this second iteration for I wanna say at least three or four years. There was an order in between us and then we also did your audit many years ago, I think, starting in two thousand and eight, I wanna say. But that was prior to my time at RHR Smith. Uh, my name's Josh Quinn. Uh, I'm the audit manager. I live in Middlebury, Vermont. RHR Smith is actually based in Buxton, Maine, but we do lots of work in Vermont. Uh, we do about seventy-five percent of the school districts in the state and many of the municipalities in cities in our state as well. So we focus a hundred percent on governmental auditing and nonprofits, so this is what we do. Uh, as far as the process, we started with your audit this year with our planning and our pre-audit process in late June. And that's where we come through and work in getting to, uh, refresh our memories with your processes and procedures. And we do all of our test work, so we look at cash disbursements, cash receipts, bank reconciliations, general entries, stuff of that sort. Do our risk assessments, all of our planning for the audit, for when we're back for field work. Uh, we did field work this year in mid-December. And that's where we wrap up any testing. We do some budgets through actual analysis. We said can't change your balance sheet items, review of activity, all kinds of good stuff. As far as the financial statements, I'm gonna start with kind of the table of contents. Uh, so first thing you get is independent auditors report. That's what you're paying for. And then there's a management discussion and analysis. Uh, that's unaudited. That's where Joe and management get to talk about anything that went on during the year. The financial statements are arranged kind of from most summarized documents all the way down to the most detailed. Uh, so the first documents that we're gonna look through are the most summarized. And as we go through the financial statements, we'll drill down into some more detail and get into some layers of budget actuals and your special revenue funds, capital project funds, that sort of. Uh, so the first thing I'll start with is the independent auditor's report. So this, again, this is what you're paying for, our opinion. Uh, financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material specs, their respective financial position of the governmental activities, business type activities, each major fund. And I agree with any information of the town of Fairhaven, Vermont. Uh, that's as good as it gets, an unmodified opinion. I was just at one of these a couple days ago and they, and the comment was, can I be a little more happy? And unfortunately, no, we can't be. That's what, that's what requires, so. Uh, that's great. Um, not surprising. You guys have always run a very tight ship. And that wasn't any different this year either.
Can I, can I stop you, can I stop you right there?
Absolutely.
Uh, I know you're gonna talk about a management letter, but tight ship and, and the contents of the management letter seem to be a little bit opposed. It's, that's, I, I've never seen a management letter with that many examples of, of.
Yeah, and I think if I was gonna get to this, we can jump right into it, but I think a number of those comments had to do with some of the absences that happened right around year end. Um, and you know, with, and so I think those led to probably at least, you know, four or five of those. Whether they were things getting posted in the wrong period or things not being recorded. And I think once that ball started to roll, it just sort of snowballed. And I don't think that that's indicative of the performance of the town in general. But it's my job to at least point those things out and just say, hey, here's what we saw. But that's, you know, part of the, the conversation is in, that, yes, they're there, but I don't have. I don't have a lot of concern that we're gonna see that again, given the staff that you guys have. You know, with Jenny still, still there, so I'm confident that it will be back in shape when I come back and we'll be pre-audit here in the next couple of months. So we'll be able to check it out and see if that's the case.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna jump right into, do it small. Uh, right into statement C, so this is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. Uh, so this is organized with your general fund in the first column, the highway fund, and then other governmental funds. Other governmental funds consist of all of your special revenue funds and your capital project funds. Uh, so for the general fund, you had assets of one million sixty-two thousand, liabilities of four hundred and twenty-three thousand. Deferred inflows, most of which is tax revenue and some notes receivable of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, for a total fund, fund balance of two hundred and sixty-four thousand. That is made up of sixty-nine thousand dollars of committed costs. And then a hundred and ninety-five thousand of unassigned. That committed cost, if we jump to note number eleven. Is down, and that committed cost, that sixty-nine thousand dollars is money you have you planned to use for FY twenty-two budget review. But it's shown as committed in the fund balance section on state receipt. Uh, highway funds, similar makeup. Uh, ended that with a total fund balance of a hundred and sixty-five thousand this year. That money is restricted. Again, if you go back to your fund balance destinations. Highway fund money is restricted because you need to spend highway funds on highway funds. Then you have your other governmental funds are make up restricted and committed for all the money that you guys have set aside for various projects and special revenue funding. All right, continuing on to statement E, so this is your statement of revenues and expenditures, basically your income statement for the year. And as we go through, we'll talk a little bit more about from budget to actual for both your revenues and expenditures. Uh, but in totality, in the general fund, you had revenues of one million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, expenditures of one million eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So there's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar surplus to start. Transfers get pulled to the bottom, below the line, so you had seventy-five thousand transferred that went into some special revenue with our four other governmental funds. Um, so the net change in fund balances for the year was a positive seventy thousand. You started the year with a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, add that seventy, you get two hundred and sixty-four, ties back to that balance sheet. The highway total revenue, six eighty-five, total expenditure, six thirty-seven. With a surplus of the year of forty-seven thousand dollars, leading to your hundred and sixty-five thousand. Okay, statement G, so this is your statement of net position for proprietary funds. Now, what we just looked at was the governmental funds, not net position, they're a little bit different. But this is where you maintain your water in your sewer funds as well as the water and sewer reserve fund. Uh, and these are business type activities as we refer to them. So similar makeup to what we just looked at. For your water in your sewer fund, for water, you have current assets of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, your non-current assets of five million ninety-five, some deferred outflows that are related to pensions. Liabilities, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, non-current liabilities of two million one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, most of which are the bonds. Some deferred inflows of resources, and then your total net position of two million seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Pretty much all of that is, is rolled up in your capital assets. So we're fun, I'm just gonna jump right to total assets, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You have deferred inflows, uh, which again related to pensions, seven hundred and ninety-eight, liability of sixty-nine, total liabilities of seven fifty-eight. And then again, you've got a total net position of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Most of that is rolled up into your capital assets. Uh, you do have your water and sewer reserve fund, uh, and that has seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in it. Uh, that's money that each year the water and sewer fund transfer cash over to that water and sewer reserve fund. All right, statement J, this is your statement of deposition for your fiduciary funds. This is your private purpose trust funds. Just organized, like we just looked at where it gives assets, liabilities, you've got a hundred and fifty-four thousand in those. Uh, the next section is the notes. Uh, the first note one, which is the longest one, talks about the standards that the town follows. Note two talks about some other standards. I'm just gonna talk about note six, this is your long-term debt schedule. So you started the year in governmental activities, so this is not water and sewer, this is everything else basically. With a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in bonds and payables. You had additions of eighty-one thousand five hundred, debts in Venetians where you paid down some of that debt. And then this is your current balance, two hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty-nine thousand of that is payable in FY twenty-two. For business type activities, total of two million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, added two hundred and fourteen, paid down one fifteen. And then the theater with two million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and twenty-five of which is payable this year. If you wanted to figure out or take a look at exactly what all these net bonds and payables were, below that you've got lists, both your governmental activities here. All the different notes and bonds that you have outstanding. I'm gonna skip the section on beamers, uh, so that's from municipal employees, retirement system. That, all of that information comes from the actuarials from the state and is required that it shows up in your financial statements. But I'm gonna skip through that section because it's a lot of information. And basically we use that information where we solve those deferred inflows and outflows related to pensions, that's where all that information's coming from. Jump right into schedule A, so this is a budget to actual report. And so one of the things that we do is we look at the budget actual and try to understand, okay, what happened, what was budgeted? What did it, what actually occurred? And then look at some of those material items, material variances and, and just make sure that we understand what happened there. So I do have some notes here, so I'm gonna cheat a little bit. But this is a lot of this discussion with both Jenny and Joe and then also looking through the information and through some of our test work. And all our working papers that we do as well. So for property taxes, uh, this includes liquid collections, uh, so that's why it's more than your original budget. So all the money you collected from prior years as well is rolled up into this line. Uh, the only other really material number you have up here is the other income. And this thirty thousand dollars has basically the insurance claim, settlement payment inside of it. And so that's what's driving that, that number there. Schedule B, this is similar budget to actual for expenditures. So I've got a couple of these to hit as well. Select board this over just with legal fees for some of the legal issues that were encountered in twenty twenty-one. For town buildings, some unexpected repairs, maintenance, partial, part of this nineteen thousand dollar overage was reimbursed with some of that settlement claim that we just talked about in the revenue. And then down here in judgments and damages, had to do with that. And then down here in judgments, judgments and damages had to do with that legal settlement that was settled in 2021. So next, Schedule C, this ties back to that total non-governmental funds that was up in Statement, in Statement C. So this breaks out basically your special revenue funds and your capital project funds. So it starts here, both the balance sheet and statement of income, and then it actually goes through here and breaks out each individual special revenue fund. So if you're interested to figure out, okay, what happened in the community gardens fund this year, you can actually scroll down, figure out, okay, well, nothing happened in the community garden fund this year. But this shows the activity that occurred in all of your special revenue funds and capital project funds as well. That pretty much wraps it up. You guys did not, were not required to do a federal compliance audit this year. You hadn't do one last year either, so that's the end of the financial statements and the audit. Let me jump into the management letter. So management letter, like we talked about a little bit, certainly some of the absences, I think affected some of these comments, some of the closeout processes. One of the comments that, you know, Joe and I talked about, that I mentioned here in the first paragraph, is really cross-training staff to enable those critical operations to continue as best they can, you know, if there is, if there are staff absences. Not only that, but just, you know, codifying and documenting those procedures that are occurring. So if somebody is not quite familiar, because they only do it, you know, once or twice a year, they can defer back to some procedures, some processes, that might be a little more step-by-step. I think you've got a lot of knowledge that has been built up over the years, and it's great, I think, to get that codified and written down, so the next, you know, whenever there is a change, if there's not, basically, you can. Some of the other comments, especially in the purchasing, Joe and I have talked about these a couple of times now. And so as I look through your purchasing procedures, for example, the purchasing procedures say, every purchase must have a purchase order. Or they say that every purchase, every purchase must be supported by a minimum of two bids. And that's, in some, in some instances, is just not happening. And so I think there's, there's an opportunity to determine, you know, are these the right procedures for what we're doing? I mean, if someone's going out to buy, you know, $30 worth of something, do they need a purchase order? Do they need to have two prices? What does that actually look like? And so I think, you know, when, you know, there's lots of templates for purchasing procedures, but those need to be modified and adjusted for what you all think makes sense. And so Joe and I have talked about, you know, sort of going through that process, like especially now that, you know, there's been some changes in, in the staff and in the treasurer position, and there's that chance for both cross-training and really just adjusting some of the procedures to make sure that it works for the town of Fairhaven with the size that you guys are and with the systems you have in place. Definitely an opportunity to improve some of those systems and make sure that they're as robust as they possibly can be. So that's pretty much all I have as far as from a presentation perspective. Is there any, are there any questions I can answer or comments?
One comment, the first thing that comes to mind, there is a, there is a purchasing policy. I don't know if it's, have you looked at that?
I have.
And so is it too tight in terms of, in terms of your $30 purchase, somebody buying a shovel or something? You know, I, I wonder how, how much is too much and how much is not enough? It, that one's a little scary, you know, in a town budget situation, or, you know, what, what's good? And I, so you're familiar with ours?
Yes.
With their policy?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I think there's, you know, not only, you know, whether or not a purchase order is required, or what the approval process looks like, but also the documentation that is included in the purchasing policy. So when the documentation says, so one of my jobs is to come and say, okay, what's the procedure? And are you in compliance with the procedure? And that's one of the comments, is the under know. But, you know, if, I think one of the requirements, any, any purchase between $2,000 and $5,000 has to have, I think, three, three quotes, and I might be getting that wrong, it might be two quotes.
That sounds familiar.
Two quotes. And, you know, I think there is an overall desire for everyone to spend taxpayer money as, as efficiently as possible, for sure. But at what point is that documentation, is it worth, you know, the person who is trying to find that price, if he, if he can't get two prices, or he goes up to, to, you know, sometimes it's, it's just as easy for him to just go buy the shovel as opposed to sit at the phone and call and see if it worked and they get the best price for the shovel. So I think there's just some, some room there probably to maneuver to figure out, to really take a look at it, okay, reading the procedure, are we doing all these things? Do all these things make sense? And maybe the, the decision is, yes, we want to do all these things, and that's fine. It's just, that's going to take more time and I think more effort to ensure that those things are going on. And I think, you know, I was just listening to some of that conversation about the state taking things on, and, and, you know, you sort of get into that red tape discussion of, of when is there too much red tape, you know, when, when the government is, is inserting itself in the processes. You know, at some level, you need to have a little bit of trust, but I think that's why you have some of these procedures in place. As you start to build up and get purchases over $5,000 or $10,000, or whatever that, that number looks like from a comfort perspective, but, you know, I think that's, you know, $2,000, I think is the limit that requires like a purchase order or requires multiple quotes.
Multiple quotes.
And there's a lot of things that are purchased for $2,000, that does that really make sense to, for that to be your limit? A lot of places, limits are higher before you, you need to start getting multiple quotes. The federal government is, is much higher, so, you know, I think it's just, it certainly lends itself to some review, I think, that Joe can do with his staff, and probably talk to both, you know, facilities, your, your highway folks, and just try to figure out what makes sense, you know, and where do you, where do you draw the line of, of a process that is just too onerous?
Quick question for you there, John, because it sounds like for some of these findings you had, cross-training is one action item, but when, when you look at our financial policies, whether it's purchasing or whatever, we have something like 10 that, that I was able to find in our policy book there. And there's, there's some towns that are, when you're going through, instead of looking at them individually here, I, I've heard that there's, like Vermont League of City and Towns has a financial policy where one, one, one-stop document. Have you ran into, how does that work in your auditing? Has that, have you seen towns with that latest and greatest version of financial policies? And would you recommend it? A lot of questions.
I guess, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure which one it is. I read lots of procedures and policies, and I think the most important part that I tell all of my clients is that you need to make sure that it works for you, because the, what, what BLCT spits out may work great for, you know, the city of Rutland, but you're not, you know, but it might not work so well for you, or it might, might work so well for Isle of Mont, you know, just, you know, some of the, it's just really difficult depending on the size. You know, all of those boilerplate processes and procedures, you know, are a good starting point, but it really needs to be customized and adapted to both what the management thinks is, is best from an efficiency perspective, and then what the select board agrees with as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of sort of moving parts, but I think it's a great start, maybe a great start to take that policy, compare it to what you have, and say, okay, you know, do some of these things make sense for us to, you know, maybe, maybe consolidate some of our procedures. Because I know, you know, just in, I think there's a procedure that's dated 2014 that was adopted, but for financial procedures, but then there was a document that was adopted, I think, about two or three years ago, that was just sort of an amendment to it, I want to say, it's like a one-page. And so, you know, consolidating some of those, because if somebody is handed the wrong one, oh, well, they didn't have, you know, that amendment. So maybe sort of, you know, consolidate those two, you know, might be helpful. So I think just, again, and I'm sorry, I don't have a, a straight yes or no answer, but it really is, you know, sort of an adaptive process.
No, that, that's fine. And one, one other question, when I look at these findings, so I'm saying, look at your policies, let's, let's make sure we're, we've got the latest and greatest and we're doing what we say we're going to do. Cross-training, did you see, because we ran into a period of time that we didn't really have the coverage we probably should have had, should we tighten that up a little bit? Like, for example, if we have someone who's going to be out for more than a couple of weeks, we need to get someone into that position doing a lot of the activity that, that I see in the management letter here that didn't happen in a timely manner?
Yeah, and I, yes, that would be great in a perfect world, but I think as, as everybody knows, staffing is extremely difficult to come by right now, and especially temp help that has some accounting capacity. And I think that's where there was the difficulty, was just in some of those processes, so when you're recording, you know, because one of the issues was at year end. So there was a payroll warrant, I think that was, for prior period, that was recorded in the wrong period. And then an AP warrant, that was also, I mean, it was entered, but it was going to be reported in the correct period, and it just didn't happen because of some of the absences there. And I think cross-training will help some of that, but if there was an opportunity for some type of temp help, if you knew there was going to be an extended absence, absolutely, I just think that's easier said than done.
Yeah, that's. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. Go to the water and sewer, the reserve accounts, I guess is what you're saying, is the 717?
Yeah.
Is that water and sewer combined, and is that the notorious reserve account and sinking fund combined? Or?
Yeah, Joe, you had pulled that breakdown. There's, there's four, yeah, there's a sinking fund, and then there was a separate water and a separate sewer. But as far as what I see was in your system, it's all rolled into one.
Okay.
Rolled into one. I'm not sure that I have a breakdown of.
No, that's all right. If, if that's the case, we can, we can chase that. It just was a, it was.
A big number.
It was a big number that surprised me. That's, and we're coming into the water and sewer season, so I just wanted to be ready for that. One other question I had was, in the regular budgets, the carryforwards, are they, are they, is that a good, a good number, a good average, a good percentage of, of a $2 million budget, those carryforward numbers? I mean, there's, I don't.
I mean, I think, you know, there's, there's metrics that, you know, I've used in the past, they talk about, you know, 30, 60, 90 days of operating expense. I don't, I think if the pandemic showed us anything, it's that even in a pandemic, you know, the government is going to do whatever it needs to do to survive, quite honestly. And if, and if it's not, then I think we've got bigger problems than 30, 60, 90 days worth of, worth of operating expense. So I really think, you know, from that fund balance perspective, I think what your number, what you're carrying for, that 195, 200,000, I think that's fine. I think in general, when people are creating budgets, it's just human nature to be conservative when we're creating a budget. So I think when you look at budgets over time, the surpluses are usually much higher than any of the deficits. And that has to do, I think, because when you're budgeting something, you're like, okay, well, I've got a higher new position, you know, I'm going to assume that this person is going to take a family plan. And then that person may come in and only take a single plan, and so that's less money. And so it just sort of, that sort of mentality, I think, because of the budgets I've built, that's always what I used to do as well. And I think you, this, this town of Fairhaven has a number of special revenue funds and reserve funds, but I think you guys have done a great job of, of making sure that you have money in reserve, so if there were to be some, you know, catastrophe or something that needs an inflow of cash, you have some cash there. And then not to mention the fact that from a, a bonding perspective, you know, municipalities in the state of Vermont have a very large ability to, to go out and get bonds. I think it's, I think it's 10 times the grand less, or something like that, it's, it's a large number.
One more question on the reserve accounts, or not on the, the surpluses, the reserve, or the revenue surplus. Do you know, do you know where that appeared from? Do we know what that is? And I ask that question because I don't know if you're familiar with our, our million-dollar surplus we had one time. A lot of it was revenue, and it snuck up on us, and nobody really paid much attention to it, and all of a sudden, we had a lot of revenue surplus, and I just wondered if you know what that, what generated the, the extra money.
So when you say revenue surplus, you're talking about like this $79,000, for example?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's $79,000, so, you know, your budget for taxes, you know, that you had, you wanted to raise 1.4 million in taxes in 2021. You collected 1,480,000, because that also included your, the delinquent taxes that you collected that year.
Okay, yeah.
So that's, that's what that's from. It's still money that you were owed.
Yeah.
So it's not like there was extra money there, it's just people, the way that this report shows is that it rolls all the property taxes plus the delinquent tax right into that number.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Sure.
Anything else, Glenn?
No, I'm good.
Josh, anything else you want to add? Or Joe, any?
I just want to say, well, thank you, first of all, you know, for using our direct minutes, you know, we appreciate the relationship and look forward to doing it in the future as well. And I know the management letter had some comments in it, but, you know, again, I, I think that's more about the situation, sort of a one of, as opposed to a consistent problem that we're seeing. And I think that there certainly allows for some, you know, great room for progress, and that's why I expect to see when we come back. And with that said, I think, you know, Joe and Jenny, and you'll see Jenny, she's down wrong, I think have all done a fine job, and I think we'll be able to sort of rebound from this past year and look forward.
All right.
That's good.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. You guys have a great night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a, a long-term contract with this, with this company, or is it year by year?
We just signed their contract, so they're here for at least another three.
Another three years, okay.
We signed that contract in, it's pretty recent, January or February, yeah.
I missed the bulldog.
Yeah. Department heads. Yep, so I get, I get to be DPW, yeah, I turn Josh off. Josh is gone. Joe, you're going to do DPW? Mike can add anything he wants for?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. No, no, after you.
Well, I'm glad to hear, I got a couple more for 100,000, just kidding.
Yeah, great news.
Spring weather, we've been kind of cleaning up in winter, you know, free lumps falling and everything, trying to make things a little bit better up there right now, still too muddy, couldn't do too much. Everything is running great.
Don't say that.
We are still, yeah, I'll get a phone call at 2:00 in the morning now. You know, like, we're still only ordering 1,000 gallons of caustic at the time until we can find out what we're going to do with the tanks, or if nothing, then we'll just have to keep it that way, you know, three times a year instead of once. As I said, you know, you made a few purchases to upgrade our laboratory to maintain our state, you know, requirements, but it's a much more accurate type system now, so we're pretty much only 20% of our, a lot of our equipment up there. We still got one big bug, which is our electronics. As you know, who kind of took care of it before, it was finger, bubble gum, and chicken water together, and it's starting to show more and more as we're getting these new equipments online, that the old system, as far as electronics and readings, are keeping up with the new technology, which the arco plum there was on my list, I thought, I said, upgrade that electrical cabinet and put in, and still wiring the U is 40 years ago. And, and I realize that, you know, that would probably be a piece meal, yes, I mean, you know, I could probably spend the $600,000, $700,000 just to redo all that, you know, I understand.
So this is something that you can piecework, you can do.
Yes.
A section of it at a time.
Yep, yep. Yep, yep.
Is there anything that's in the budget, Joe, for that, that part, that where it's gonna be?
For the electrical?
Yeah.
That's, it's pretty expensive, wasn't it? We'll have to see what it looks like.
Well, that was for the whole thing. But if we do break it down.
Piece by piece.
You know, we, you know, be the hundred thousand dollars. Well, I'm just saying, you're talking forty-year-old electronics.
Sure.
You start messing with that, everything's gotta come up to code today. And there's a lot of things that are hooked and looped through, things that, I mean, we don't even use any.
Well, I guess my question was, was it, has there been a reserve fund started for that type of an upgrade?
Sure, there's, uh, let me look. Water capital improvements have, says two hundred and eighty-one thousand, almost two hundred and eighty-two thousand.
So we have something we could fall back onto if there's, if there was a problem.
We did have an oil engineer, and, and like I said, that exorbitant number for the whole thing, starting to finish.
What was that number anyways?
I wanna say he said it was like four hundred and seventy-five thousand. And you know as well as.
And that was a while ago?
Yeah, the quote last week doesn't.
Right.
Still stay today. But, yeah, I mean, we could do like just our recording charge that the state requires. We could do just our sonics, the monitors, the level going through the plant. You know, it doesn't have to all be done at the same time, it can be done piece meal.
Should that happen? I mean, starting this year?
I mean, that's, yeah.
Well, and that's why I've been coming to the last couple as far as the arco plums go. Like I said, that was on my list, it's the number two priority, at least to get it started, you know. He would have to come back and, he looked at everything. It would prob, he said it would probably be cheaper to just rewire some condules up than it would be to try to fix ones there.
Oh, yeah.
Priority wise, you know, you talk about replacing the two tanks and the electronics. Which one would be a higher priority for you, if you can only do one?
The tanks, obviously, like I said the last time.
That's, that's.
That phone call to ASMAT for a hundred, or a thousand gallons of caustic.
I think the tanks should be priority number one, on top of the list. I mean, it's, they're not gonna get any better.
And we've gotten forty years out of them, I mean, I'm not saying they were bad to start with, they've been excellent. Just like everything else has a shelf life, and it's, they're, they're reaching their end, that's all.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
One quick question, like, today I saw, I saw you up in South, so, are you checking for leaks? Is that what you're doing when you're?
What we do is we read the meters.
That's the way you read your meters?
Once a week, and then that tells us for the meters that are installed, there's alarms, there's dry, there's leaks, there's a burst, like a, you know, vacant house that was froze over the winter. And a pipe broke, and was, I don't remember what the setting is, but just say it was like fifty gallons an hour continuously, that would have a burst.
So that would show, that would show on, on your computer, okay.
And so with these new meters, we can see that. So Joe, almost a year ago now, wasn't it? We started reading unofficially every week. And we've got a lot of leaking toilets, dripping faucets, and that adds up. Whereas with the old meters, we didn't, we were ready to record.
It can, it can check, or, I mean, it can detect a running toilet, that's what they're saying. That's pretty good.
And then you guys follow up with the landlord, or send him a letter, or whatever that they're?
Yep, Eileen just, um, information, I downloaded to read, just the software every week. And she, I don't know the process that she uses, but anyway, she pulls up an alert report and goes from there. It's helped the town quite a bit as far as not wasting water, not wasting chemicals. And the townspeople are happy because they're not getting this bill and saying, I didn't use that much water. But their toilets run for the last three months, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Joe, are you gonna be on the other side of?
Yes.
DPW?
But to, to kinda bounce off what Mike just said, we actually just resolved the situation today, Eileen and I. We had sent the gentleman his, his, the, they found a leak, and they left his hose on or something. And he, you know, the bill wasn't coming out for another two months. So if he, if we wouldn't have said anything, his water would have just been, just running on the ground. We were able to help him before the bill came out, you know, corrected it, and when his next bill comes, it'll be, it'll be fine, it won't even be problems. So it's, yeah, these meters have really paid for themselves in the, for the, for the residents, for the hassle that, that people were going through. We just, tenfold rough estimate.
Are we close to having them all in now?
We've got all three more, no one since I was here two months ago, but, you know, it's, oh, nobody's calling to make it up.
Did, did letters go out to those folks yet?
We'll get there. It's on the, we dropped it on the parking lot, so we don't forget, but there was a lot going on.
And it's still cold, and there's quite a few in town, and we don't really wanna start working, not working, taking, screwing up trailers and, you know, disturbing the electric take yet. That'll be something in the April, June, but we can start getting on.
Another month at least.
Okay, so I get to be DPW and the town manager today. And I'd like to point out that Ed Boe from the Rutland Regional is here to talk about the MPM municipal management point under old business. Okay, so DPW, we've used seven hundred and twenty-seven tons of salt this year, and about four hundred and seventy-five yards of sand. The guys, since it's been a little warm outside, they've been out cold patching, but those freeze thawed cycles, they do pop those patches. So if you see a hole, please let us know, we'll get out there and, and patch it up as fast as we can. They did, there was a soft spot on South Main, they dug that out. They found a layer of clay under there, and just a, kind of a thin bit of asphalt in that spot, and that seemed to be the problem, where it was rut and broke it up, they did fix that. Cleanup operations have started for post, for post-winter. If you, if you were out today, you saw the guys are out there cleaning up the sidewalks where we, uh, did a little bit of lawn mowing on the side. You'll see them out, they're gonna keep picking away at that as they go. I saw them, they were out on North Main today. Street sweeping, street sweeping will be firing up soon too. And they'll be prepping the, the equipment, the winter equipment for storage. Paving, June, you'll see Swamp Road is the first, this was on the agenda for last year slash this year. Swamp Road is the first to be paved. We dropped in some culverts, did some ditch work last year. The guys are gonna go back to make sure that's still holding up, but that's scheduled for June. And for roadside mowing, we did budget for, to rent a mower this year, and that is scheduled for August.
Swamp Road paving, just, it's not the whole thing.
Correct?
It's just spotty, a spot in it?
That was the original plan, but I'm gonna have to go back and make sure.
Eighty-two thousand five hundred.
No, it doesn't.
No, there was, there was, there was a.
There was that spot where they, where they dug that, where the cover used to go on it, dropped it, was that, was that the only spot that was really nasty up there?
Yeah, well, let me make sure that that's still the plan, but that, as far as I know, yes. Sewer, we got some of our sewer equipment online for the rehab down the street. They will be starting to take the, the oxidation ditch, the big pit in the middle, that's coming offline. So right now, they're gonna drain that down, we gotta clean that out, and ship out the gunk that's on the bottom, and then they'll start closing that up. So it's, we're getting closer. They're still on a July timeframe to shut that down, to, to, to close out the project. Next week, though, we talked about that generator, we're gonna fire up that generator over on Adam Street. They did put in the fuel line for it, we're waiting on the electrician to finish up hooking that generator to the panel. So that is what I have for them.
Questions for DPW?
I have one, I'd like to see them take these wings off the trucks. Because they're all trying to patch roads that are all muddy and breaking up, and with that extra weight on them, and they certainly aren't gonna use the wings again, even if we get snow, because they do so much damage. I'd like to see them take them off both of the big trucks.
Let me, let me get with Aaron.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. It's the time of year now.
Yeah, they, I mean, they're all trying to patch the road, and they're going across it, so much extra weight in that truck, it's just crazy.
Yeah, I, I do have a comment about South Main also, I was there, assisted them just a little bit. That, there's a layer of clay, it's, it's like a shale, shale glaze on top of the, really nice shale underneath it. But over the top of it, there's fourteen inches of, uh, an item four that was supposed to have been compacted. And there's just shy of three inches of blacktop on that road. Okay? More than that in some people's driveways.
Yeah.
So that's part of the problem down there. And it's kind of a shame that that happened, but.
That's that last project?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good project.
That was that short stretch from tracks right up.
Tracks, two range. Well, it went almost, just about to where that hole was, where we were.
Apparently, there was issues with the property owners, it didn't want the, uh, vibratory rollers running. And then it was tons of rain and everything else.
They had a lot of mud there.
Uh, so this is the byproduct of a job that didn't go, go right.
Anything else? Um, town manager?
Town manager, uh, we've moved, we're moving into fourth quarter now for, for our budget. Everybody is looking pretty, pretty solid, we should be at about a seventy-three percent expended rate at this point. DPW, water and sewer, water and sewer are all under budget. O one O, however, is a little over, we're about two and a half percent over, sitting at seventy-five percent. So, um, over the next few weeks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna monitor that. If it, if it continues to climb, I'm gonna have to shut the budget down early. And this is just the inflation that we've hit. Fuel costs are higher, we've had not an unusual amount of, of legal, but we did go back and forth with legal a few times on a few, a few projects. I might be able to scrape a little bit of money back from the phone company, they were double dipping for a little while, so we're gonna scrape some of that cash back. But just to let the board know, we're not in, we're not in a terrible situation, but we're keeping our eye on it. From that, for as much paperwork as I've pushed around, you think I'd done more these last week and a half? We'll start with the Adam Street Bridge, that's, again, on our, on our agenda. I did get, we weren't funded for that project, but I did get the great news that we didn't, our, for Little Fairhaven, our project made it to the Secretary of Transportation's desk. Only like a third, just under a third of these applications make it up to the top of the federal government, so I'm very proud of that. I was a little discouraged, I wasn't gonna apply again, but we did so well that I thought, let's try one more time. So it's the best way to succeed out here. Cross training continues this week for the accounting position. This week, I'm starting to do, I've taken over the live, uh, what do you call it? The packet, the, the general payments. So I'm gonna be handling that for the next two weeks, just so I get a handle on what that looks like in a regular work week. So just in case, Lord knows somebody leaves, I'll be able to handle that side of things. The water and sewer budget, Bob noted that that's, that's moving, that process has begun. April fourteenth, I think, is when the board will see their first, get their first review. The school invited us to a career fair, so that's, that's great, and somehow they invited my wife. I, I don't know how they got her email, but maybe she'll come. So we're going to that April twenty-second. Uh, and that's what I got for you today.
Great, questions for Joe?
That program that was started from the high school, where we, I think, did we have a, one of the students now at the sewer plant?
Yes.
Is that still going on?
It is.
How's that, how's that working?
Really well, sewer is doing exceptionally well, he's, the young man is getting credits in school for like math and science, and he's able to work down and get experience at the wastewater plant. So for somebody that's seventeen years old, by the time he graduates high school, he'll have more experience than, than some twenty-five-year-old adults. He's gonna do very well for himself.
So that's a good project to try to continue with the school. I mean, even if, you know, even if we could get somebody that might help, you know, help out at the water plant.
We do.
No, you know what I'm saying, no, I'm saying a, a student that might be interested in learning the, the things at the water plant.
We do.
He's at both places?
No, you have two.
Oh, you have two of them, okay, I had just the one, I'm sorry.
And, and Mike can talk more about that, but I think that young man is trying to get his certificate now, no?
Yes.
Yeah.
So good. I don't know what his actual term is, what we call him, an intern, you know, he's doing our testing, he's learning that, he's learned to make adjustments.
Good.
So we're training him just like a regular operator. He has taken the Mount Royal Water Training Course to get his state certification. He hasn't taken his, his test yet, just still working on his. So, I mean, the potential in two years, we'll have two certified operators.
Very good, that's good.
Which is great. Any else for Joe, questions? Okay, thank you, Joe. Um, if you guys don't mind it, can we jump down to appointment with the sidewalk grant? So Ed is here for that. Joe, do you guys wanna? Go over that?
Sure, so, um, the previous board did, so let me back up even further.
Yep.
Regional helped and wrote most of the grant that will pay for this sidewalk project. And they did, in that grant, they did write in some, I wanna say forty-five thousand dollars for project management. The way that myself and my staff are swamped with our current projects, the previous board thought it would be a good idea to have Rutland Regional, which they, they volunteered, Rafi, have Rutland Regional manage this program for us as the local project manager. Eric Hall, who was appointed as the manager, he, he found employment elsewhere. So now we need to appoint a, a new manager, and that's why Ed's here.
So the new manager's gonna be Stephanie Burke. She's had, her, she used to be the town manager in Proctor, before that she worked at Otter Creek Engineering, she did this. She actually probably has more experience than Eric in not just to design scoping projects, but this is a full-on construction project. So you will be in good hands, you heard. We, you know, we've been doing this for, you know, we're doing a construction project in West Rutland, some scoping projects for Pittsburgh, some other towns, and we also do grants, and other things for, sometimes municipal planning grants for the larger Vermont Community Development Program grants. So, you know, we do a lot of this to serve some of the towns. Like Joe said, we helped write the award, and V Trans has this in there, they want to see that as an MPM, regardless of who does it, so. We're offering to do it, and hopefully we'll spread that test.
And Joe, you would need a?
You want a motion?
Motion to change the project manager?
I would, I would need a motion and some signatures, and then we also have the contract to sign to, you know, codify it.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we have Stephanie Burke become the municipal project manager for sidewalk project.
Give her a second. Uh, motion, motion by, seconded by Bob, to appoint Stephanie Burke as the project manager, is that what it is, Ed?
Yeah, for Fairhaven, STP BP twenty-one twelve, downtown pedestrian improvements.
BP twenty-one twelve, is that what it is?
BP twenty-one.
Yeah, you go to that one.
You'll get that out. You'll get that answer.
Okay, yeah. Questions on the motion?
Um, just an overall, what, what's the timeframe, where are we at with the project?
Uh, just, this is the contract now, um, and then. The scope, I don't know if I have a schedule in front of me, but I can read quickly what the scope of work is, and then we can kind of work backwards, so, um. Very high level, it's, uh, procuring the design team to design the project, and development of those plans, development of the conceptual and then construction plans.
Okay, so we're not, we're not talking construction this, this, uh, building season?
Yeah. Yeah, and then you consider construction and then, um, public meetings in there as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And the last thing that we've accomplished, I think, was a final, like, grant, a plan for down there. It's, right, for the sidewalk? No, I'm thinking of the parking, nevermind, I'm thinking of the parking, right?
Well, that's what I was wondering if those, that disruption could be combined, but it's not gonna be able to, so that's, that's not gonna happen.
You guys have a lot going on, which is good. Thank you for Joe, here.
Other questions?
So basically, she's gonna be planning. What we're gonna do downtown for sidewalks and stuff like, that was my question a couple of weeks ago to you.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna replace the sidewalks from just beyond the library. Downtown, turn the corner, and then down past the Wooden Soldier.
I mean, just that one?
Just the one side?
The one side.
Yeah. And she'll, there won't, she won't be designing it?
She's, she's. Project manager, right?
Right, she'll just manage it, so.
She'll be the project manager.
Right, so like, the town, you guys will decide, you guys will help in the design it, we just kind of manage that.
She's like the EIC on a job or something like that, you know? Charged.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, um, all favor the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries?
And then I only have one spot for somebody to sign the contract, so, uh, maybe a motion for the chair to sign that.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we have the chair sign the contract.
Second. Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rich, to sign the contract. For the sidewalk grant.
The, the, the chair signing. That was the way the motion was, okay.
And, uh, Joe, you've gone through the whole. You've gone through the contract?
I have, it's mostly boilerplate. We're not liable, they're not liable kind of stuff, yes.
I like the we're not liable part.
Me too.
That's the most important part.
Uh, questions on the motion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
So, you're looking at like, uh, two thousand twenty-three construction?
Yeah.
Twenty-three? This is gonna be twenty-five.
You think it'd be that?
Oh yeah, hundred percent, it's looking how long it'd take us to do this parking right, NEPO will take six months.
Oh, this isn't another one of them grants through the state, is it?
It is. It's gonna be a long haul. But when we're done, the entire downtown will be repaid with new sidewalks and new parking lots and new lights.
How much, how much, uh, water line and sewer line are we replacing?
There is, uh, a big hunk of water sewer that, or water line that runs underneath Main Street that should be replaced, and it's on the list to be replaced. And it should be done before the state comes through, because state paving is coming through in twenty-four. Twenty-four.
Well. Maybe earlier. There's a new, there's a new candidate, or there's a candidate for representative that, uh, has to make Benson look better, so.
I kinda would. Yeah.
That'd be nice, yeah.
We, the thing with the. I was gonna get on my high horse, but.
We all know.
No, we, we, we do appreciate, uh, all the help that, uh, you, Devin, have done.
Yep.
In, in that project, and, and I hear you'll be moving on to bigger and better things, so, uh, I wanna thank you for all the help.
Oh, yeah, well, it's been great working with you guys, and I'm still gonna be around doing special projects for the RPC, so I'm gonna be probably working on some zoning. When you guys get another.
Did you get him, did you get an email from Phil?
About the permit notices? That I have right here?
Nope.
Now that's all I got.
Okay. There's one coming.
Okay. Uh, oh wait, maybe I did get that, about the twenty coming out on the twentieth.
Yes, and, and some questions?
Yeah, I saw those.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm on that, so I'm gonna stay doing some zoning work, I'm gonna keep doing the brownfields work, um, which, if you guys have brownfield sites that you're thinking are. Something that might be slow because you think it's contaminated, or, and maybe we have money to assess that.
Oh really? To assess?
To, to assess my work.
What happens if, if they, if you find that there is a problem?
Then you gotta go, you gotta dig in?
It depends, it depends on whether the state, like, says you have to do something right away, or it's better to not touch it. If you own the property with that on it anyway, you're liable.
Right.
Know about it or not, so. So I'm still gonna do that, and then I'm gonna still do the Act two fifteen, section two forty of the U.S., so, I think I'll get down back into the plane more. Been director for eight years, it's time for some fresh blood.
How's that search going?
Have to get people.
I know.
Have to get anyone, we're hiring for a planner right now, too. Like, just a land use, straight up, straight up land use planner, and the response has been surprisingly low, so, I think it's just tough everywhere trying to find bodies, so.
Did you talk to Jonas?
Just left Jonas in Castleton, I'm not spending any more time with him.
Dude's everywhere.
No.
Nope.
Alright, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I've got some permit, these are for Phil, so.
Yeah, Joe can get him, too.
I don't know if you need me for the ARPA discussion.
If you wanna hang around for that, that's next, so. Yeah, alright. Uh, ARPA discussion, I know Joe, the board asked you to kind of put some criteria together and how we might be able to rank the list and kinda.
Sure, um, and yeah, I did, I pulled some criteria together, um, this was actually, I, I used what we were using for our capital, capital budget. Um, and just kind of rejiggered it a little bit. I also, it was kind of last minute, but I also had four bullet points that I just kind of boiled down what I've got from VLCT. With just some thoughts on how they think and how folks are spending their ARPA funds, so, um, just 'cause it's kind of a starting point, so.
Yeah, I guess that's it. Uh, was there feedback on the? Kind of Joe's. Is that a good starting point at least to?
I, I talked to Joe a little bit and gave him some feedback on page two. I like say page two, there's two sides, the one that deals with the question of, uh, use will complete an existing project. Uh, and, uh, that he had, that, that was the two that was proposed there. I, I told him, I said, I looked at that to be almost like it was sitting to that nice one-time funding, don't do something that's gonna increase your taxes after you spend the ARPA money by. The same amount of money that you went out and spent. And, um, uh, on the third bullet on that page, we'll, uh, use will completely cover the cost of the project. When we weighted it, the weighting factor that was, that was a two on that right there, I said, I'd, I'd rather see that be a five, isn't that one that truly, take the ARPA money, get that big project, do it. And you don't have to worry about it for many years. Uh, to me, that's the, the best of all worlds. Other, just. Comment that I made when I looked at it, uh, was a question I had for him to say, we have a little over seven hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding. We had our first meeting with a wish list that was extremely large.
Yep.
Uh, and was wondering if we earmark, uh. Into, uh, two different categories. Small one-time funding expenditures, if you wanted to do that, and put a little of that aside and say, that's earmarked for that. And then you, and ta- like, for example, the seven hundred, you take, you know, so, um, six hundred thousand, you say, that's for a major big project. A hundred and fifty, if you had some one-time things to go there, is that's, when you start boiling that list down. The other one was the list had multiple things there, but now looking at these four bullet points that, uh, that he gave us about, uh, pretty good guidance really, when it said. Uh, you know, the, the first bullet is, don't rush, ta- you know, take your time.
Yep.
Good, uh, I'm, in, in spending that was pretty good, think big, uh, was the, your next bullet, you're like, well, I'm, I'm reading what you're saying for you. But I, but I think those, those were, were good, and what they're really saying is, a lot of the, the recommendations I hear out there, feel free to jump in at any time here, but, but, if you, on anything, but, uh. It seemed like, uh, there, a lot of the advice is saying, what are those big dollar items that, that you just don't have the money for? The other one is leveraging the cash. And saying, if you could get, if you could turn, uh, two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding, yeah, with a fifty percent grant match, and, and that's a four hundred thousand dollar project. That's really making the most, uh, uh, out of your stuff, and the other one is, uh, the, the don't add debt, uh, uh, and, and expense to your budget as a result of ARPA. In other words, don't go, the things that you normally would have to do anyway, year over year, don't put something in, that once you spend that money, you've got, we've got seven hundred thousand, our, our budget just went up seven hundred thousand. You know how hard it was just to get an eighty-six thousand dollar increase through this last budget cycle that we, we, we got there, so. I, I thought those were good, didn't know, I talked a little process with them, and again, we're just spitballing it, basically saying, where, where would you go from here? Would you take that huge list and based on those four bullets, are there some things that, that wouldn't meet some of that criteria? Doesn't mean you're not gonna do them, it means you, you're gonna find a different way to fund some of the things that were mentioned there, but it says for ARPA funding, maybe you don't use those. And, because we still need another information meeting. The pre-work before our next information meeting is that taking this, taking that list, coming down, agreeing on the rubric that we put together. And saying, okay, here's what we're looking at, throw some projects in, uh, in some kind of priority, that was.
Well, one of the things I thought about too, or, I, I may have mentioned last time, but I, I spent most of my time looking at this list this week. And I, I, it's kind of tea read, tea leave reading, but I pulled everything out, I didn't pull it out, I just marked it as infrastructure. As opposed to, because there's gonna be some infrastructure money coming. And, so that should be a criteria as well, that, that we, that we take the infrastructure stuff out and don't use the ARPA money, or, or try not to use the ARPA money. For things that are really infrastructure, li- like water lines, and, you know, maybe. Maybe capital purchases like, like tanks, should say here, but, but not water lines or something like that, that, that should be. And, and obviously, we don't know what that infrastructure package is gonna look like, so it's kind of a roll of the dice, but, it is. But it, it's, there's gonna be something, and there's a ton of money coming all over, and nobody knows how or when and why, but. Things like what I, I mean. You know, like, simple things like Washington Street manhole rehabilitation, that's infrastructure. Fence maintenance even, containment walls for the demopad, that, that kind of stuff like that, I just, I made it, I was kinda, I was kind of, I made it. I was kind of harsh on infrastructure, I, what I thought was infrastructure, I, I just wanted to take out of my consideration of it. So, I think that's something we should, we should at least use as a criteria of.
I had mine on mark, it must, that must be stolen garage.
Do we use some of that money for, uh. Adding to this infrastructure project, like the pipeline sale, Prospect Street that Aaron had mentioned? Can we get a grant and use some of this money as a grant fund match? To, to do the project?
I think that was the only thing Jeff, Jeff Sheldon, uh. Imparted his wisdom on, he said, I want, I want a lot of money in the, uh, in the grant match, and I, and I agree with him, and that's, that's one of the things we did with the, with the, um.
It would make, make sense for. Enough to do that, really.
Take like, are you, are you talking, which, like, take like, you know how we said we'd, we'd love to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra in grant match? Take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars near market to grant match?
Yeah.
Is, is what I, I think I hear you saying, I'm going, yeah, 'cause then you could, the one that says leveraging your ca- your cash, you're absolutely doing it.
Why, why does it have to be used by again? At twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five.
Now, is that, has to be used by or designated by?
Incumbered by twenty-five.
Okay.
Gone out the bank, out of your bank in twenty-six.
That's another question, where is that money sitting right now?
Sitting in our bank account.
I thought we got all of it.
Unless you have it all.
I thought we did.
In fact, I think the last meeting, I'm like, yeah, we got all that money.
So you can't just allocate it to grant, match, reserve, and let it sit there, you've got to expense it, expend it by.
Yeah, you, you can't just save it. Although the longer it sits in that bank account, the more interest it accrues, so, almost a million dollars in interest is good money.
That would, that would, yeah, that wouldn't hurt, I mean, and. So, we could put money in the grant match, and then if we get to a point, we can pull it out of grant match and use it, if we get to the point that we haven't been able to allocate all the grant match money. I mean, I'm just trying to juggle.
The feds are asking that, that you keep the money in its own account.
Oh, okay.
But you can just use that money as you, as grant match just fully out of, out of the ARPA.
You're near market.
You wouldn't move it in the budgets.
But you still wanna have it broke down, uh, while it's in the bank, you, or whatever, you still want it broke down, and where, what's gonna go where?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that'd still be, it'd still be all in one lump sum, but everything that we broke down, like, I think the project he's talking about on Prospect Street is a good idea. Because, but, so now we gotta look into getting a grant, the match at, that's, that's.
That's infrastructure.
Yeah, but that's, there's a lot of stuff, Main Street, I mean, if we're gonna tear up Main Street and put a new pavement, and we're gonna do all this other work down there.
Let's do, let's do underneath first.
Without a doubt.
If we don't, I mean, if we don't do that water line and then the pavement comes through, I don't wanna be the, I can't be responsible for tearing up new pavement, I promised I wouldn't do that. That would be an ideal project.
If, if they're looking at twenty-four, we should be looking at something right now, to see what we can do there before they get here.
Yep, uh, Aaron's already reached out to Annie, and they're already pulling, we, in fact, they submitted something for funding. As well as just pulling, uh, we have numbers ready.
How big is it, how big does that mean?
I J I don't know.
Okay.
We can get it though.
Now, how, how far are they, is it gonna go down, right down the hill, all the way down?
It, it is down the hill, I don't know how far up it comes, but. Yeah, I think that's the line that feeds the entire downtown.
And the feed the entire downtown.
The buildings, yeah.
That's not the line that goes to the water, to the tank? Or is it? Southside tank?
I don't, you know, I, I don't wanna say yes or no, 'cause I don't.
Okay.
Might be. Tied in there somewhere, it's gotta be. Where else would it come from?
There's a couple lines that feed the south tank.
Oh, there is.
That is one of them.
Excuse me? Yes. Because when we had the leak on the Adam Street Bridge, and we closed, DPW closed that, that was one of the jobs that forgot to get opened back up. So the south tank was slowly going down because it wasn't getting all different water sources from all the different pipes.
Yeah.
So I do know that there are multiple feed lines heading to the south tank, and I'm pretty sure that's one of them.
So do we wanna? Do we wanna kind of individually take this criteria, I mean, Bob has some criteria, come up with individual lists, and then come to a meeting and. Kind of hash out our differences on what the list actually is, and then have that next public hearing?
That's what I was saying, I had one. That's what I was saying, I had one, the paper that we got, I'd gone through it and I'd marked what I thought.
Marked ones.
You know, what I thought was important and what wasn't important.
Yeah.
I wished I had it, 'cause it's.
I did that same thing, but I don't have it, wouldn't get it.
I know where mine is, it's at the office at home.
Does that sound? You know, put it, put that list together, we come back and kind of share notes and then come up with a list for a public hearing, it may not be the final list, but it is a list that.
It gives somebody, it gives the public something to look at and something to think.
Well, at least get everybody angry, all the ones.
Yeah, get them angry.
Everybody's ox that did that got door.
And and if you do, I can just interject here for a second, if you do prioritize like infrastructure versus other projects, that does free up more money of this ARPA fund while we're waiting for the infrastructure.
Yeah, I I wish there was some direction on that, therefore you haven't heard anything.
About the infrastructure bill? Yeah, I mean, all we're hearing is there's lots of money coming.
Yeah, I know.
Especially in water and wastewater.
Yes, yes.
See, that's where we benefit.
So it's kind of this weird thing.
Yeah.
But you know, the beauty of this ARPA money is you can just put it in the general fund now, basically, you know, do the standard allowance for revenue.
I think we oughta, I think we oughta put some in for the Sleckman razor pay. From thirteen cents an hour to eighteen.
Do you make that much?
I I agree with the the approach of looking at that, I think you also might wanna try with this rubric that that he's proposing over here.
See if it works.
Take and try a couple of them and put them through and see if it ma- so if it makes sense to you after, did it come out as a high priority like you thought? Or if something that you thought was gonna be a high priority priority came out different and that would tell us that maybe we have to tweak the rubric a little bit. Yeah, that's a great.
Joe, did you, did we already schedule the second hearing or is that to be determined?
Yeah, whenever you guys are ready.
Say at least a few more meetings.
Yeah, I would, you know.
Are you finally at least bringing the list back at the next meeting?
Yep.
Discussing.
We could, I mean, I, my, my. My thought would be is give yourself enough time, so find a meeting when we don't have a lot of appointments and.
I I know. But we're getting a lot off the plate today, so.
So Joe, when do you think there's time available, put it on one of the next couple agendas?
I'll uh, how about we shoot for late April, late April, early May and if it, if it works out.
Sounds good, now, there's ARPA funding that you have, I thought there was a date that you had to have some kind of feedback to the state of what the your projects, you didn't have to be, you didn't have to commit, but you had to, what your plan was and what you were doing. Is that still out there, uh that you're, you owe some kind of report?
It is, uh in fact, I I went to our, they have a portal built just for this and I went in and I was gonna do, you know, I wanted to see where the report was and it said, you don't owe us anything. And so I panicked and I called, let me see, what's the young lady over at BLCT?
Katie.
Yes, Katie, and she's like, you're fine, Joe, they haven't opened up the window yet, so.
They haven't opened.
Um, we're ready for the reporting, it's just, I'm anxious about it, yeah, we're we're okay.
Okay, good.
All right, well, thank you.
Joe's on top, and if you have any questions, you can.
Very, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh moving on, uh salt shed discussion, continuing, yeah, the ongoing drama with salt shed.
Okay, so our numbers, let me get my.
I hope that isn't a number on bottomless page I'm looking at.
That is not the number.
Thank God.
The number is more than that.
Are you kidding me?
I am not. If I can find what I'm looking for. Oh, yeah, no, it's right in front of me. Uh so we, we had the engineer come back out or reassess again, um construction's at two eighteen, three seventy eight now, which is less than what it was, uh but to, so the total pro- I'm gonna just just jump right to it, Jay, uh your total project, um as it sits now is gonna be two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars.
For a friggin' salt shed?
Yes.
That's ridiculous, I'm sorry, that's, you're putting ten up.
I agree, I get it, I don't disagree with you, but this is, this is, this is the world we live in now.
I think I saw in one of them where excavation was seventy thousand dollars. Not on this paper here, but one of the other ones you gave me.
That is a quote from, that is a budget number, yes.
What is up there for excavation is gonna cost seventy thousand dollars?
Jay, we asked somebody to take a look and that's what they came up with, and that that includes blocks and placing the blocks as well, purchase and placing.
That's way, I think that's way out of whack, I'm sorry. I'd like to price just one in tents itself and see what it is.
So what the excavation included, are you gonna take off clay?
They're gonna.
And and draw back in suitable material?
Yep, they're gonna dig it out, put in the base, use the black top we have, buy the blocks, install the blocks.
Well, that black top you have up there is not really a good base. Really.
I think it's pretty good stuff. I've seen it.
Well, it'd be a good top base, but if that's all clay up there like I think it is. Some good stone out there. Yeah, it'd be good for Tom.
You're not putting a lot of weight in there. God, that's, once again, I'm gonna say the same thing I said a year ago when I sat in the board. You get the state involved and then any project you start, it's gonna double or triple.
And so this project has been nothing but a pain, um but for for all the fussing and hand wringing that we're doing, this project is free. I was not put, if.
I don't think so, not at two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, I don't care if the state's giving you money or not, somebody's making a killing on this.
It, yeah, somebody's making some money on it, but at the end of the day, um and there's, we're gonna have to find supplemental money, there's just not cash out there. The state, we have this grant from the state, we have a grant from uh the watershed, um which is all, which is grant money. And uh if you use some ARPA money to fill the gap, you now have a salt shed for free. So, so.
How much, where are we, what is the gap?
Eighty, eighty two thousand.
Eighty two thousand one thirty six.
Okay.
So, so again, for for all the, I know it's been a hassle, but you can't beat a free construction project.
I I agree with you, you know, it's outrageous, it feels like we're getting, taken advantage of, but at the end of the day, I gotta, I have to tell myself we're getting a salt shed for eighty two thousand one thirty six. Uh even though, and the the grant money covers everything else, but what, can we, and then I asked if we said, forget the state, we're just gonna do it ourselves, could we put a salt shed like this up for eighty two thousand one thirty six? That's really the question that I had and I came back and I go, don't like it, but I'm going, if we're gonna put one up.
And that's what you're trying to show here, right, Joe?
Yeah, so on.
Take the state money, you pay a heck of a lot of money for it over all costs, eighty two thousand, whereas you can take the quote unquote cheaper option, without the state funding, you're paying more.
The town would pay more.
We'd pay ninety six.
The town would pay, uh, yeah.
We'd pay ninety six thousand for that same salt shed.
If you're looking at a hundred thirty two.
So it it has been a pain, but I don't, uh, I mean, when, when is the next time you'll have a chance to get, get a free salt shed placed where you wanted it? There's just, I, the alternative, so the alternative, the third alternative besides these alternatives, um is to just end the project. That would, that would, we still, we still would have to have paid the engineer, which we have, um but the state said, look, we have timing on this too. So we could recoup funds from you, so we'd end up paying the state anywhere between ten and fifteen thousand because we have returned their money.
That teaches.
That's, yeah, it's, it's, we're really in kind of a, it's, it's a good problem to have to get something for free, but at the same time, this has not been a smooth process, not at all.
So when is this gonna be built?
Uh we can get the, if we get, if I get funding approval, we can get this RFP out in the next week, it could be, it could very well be put up at the end of the year. But without the cash, that's, they're not gonna release, they're not gonna release the RFP and they're not gonna let us bid it unless we get approval.
And and the question that of that eighty two thousand one thirty six, we're saying, where is that money? Where where are we getting that from? And Joseph, ARPA, understand, we're still talking, ARPA funding and having. So to to commit right now to ARPA funding without having.
Everything else on the table.
Everything else on the table and being out there, I I I think that would make some people very unhappy, uh.
You're, rest assured, you're gonna make people unhappy, you have a chance in hell of not making people unhappy, so just, just.
The the other, the other place, because if you didn't use ARPA funding, we've pretty much, when when we get on talking about the other item on the agenda, you pretty much, your grant match money that you have in the budget is gone and the extra ninety six, you've just about taken all your grant match funding, that there's the two places, ARPA, that we, that we, in the.
All that we put in this year.
That's gonna start, start July one.
Yeah.
But it, but figure that it's just about gone, it still gets us back to, you know, we talked earlier about putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, that's not grant match money though, right? That's just shortfall or is that?
We.
That's grant.
We put it, we we put it in the grant match in near market.
No, I understand we did that to vo- in the vote, but we wouldn't be paying it, we wouldn't be, you couldn't take that money out for grant match or for this, this project out of a grant match fund, can you?
Yeah, this is, that was, what do we do?
That's what grant matches.
It could, yeah.
Okay. Certain percentage.
I I was just, the only thing I was trying to, the point I was trying to make was to get the project done this year, to get it, I mean, sometimes you step in something, you're just not gonna get it off your shoe no matter how how you try, and this is one of them. But I look at it, I'm saying, we need it, the the price is right, I'd feel more comfortable saying that I'd use the, from grant match that after July one, the ninety six that's there, and if we happen to come back in our discussions, our s- salt shed gets to the top of the list and everyone agrees with using the process and rubric, fine, we're there, but at least if we, we could start the the RFP, is that what you call it?
Yes, the request.
To get the RFP in.
One way or the other.
We we would have, one way or another, we'd have the money, so the real question that comes back for us. And even though you might have to hold your nose when you say yes a little bit on this, knowing that it's a, a, you know, two hundred and eighty five thousand dollar, uh.
Fifty thousand dollar project.
For, uh, to, to get the eighty two thousand dollars. That's where we are, I think.
If the project is ended, we're gonna be in deep doo later on anyway.
We've gotta, we gotta get away from.
We we need.
Cause I, it's my understanding, we gotta get out of down where we are.
Somebody, some, some, you know, someday, somebody's gonna go and say, you've got salt there, you know, they've been conveniently not looking for a long time.
What'd you say the state costs, the hat in it for cost already? You've got engineering to date of fourteen.
Yeah, the the state cost isn't in there, um because they they told me, well, we don't know if we'll, they told me, I don't know if we'll take it back, but we probably will. So I, without knowing for sure, um they said between ten and fifteen.
If if they, if we cancelled the product.
If we can't, if we just say we don't want your money, state, they'll add.
Right.
Thirty thousand up to the eighty two is.
Right.
Fifty two.
I guess you don't have any choice.
This word, I like being backed right in the corner to start with.
That's right.
State, I'm telling them.
I just don't know how you get from two eighteen down to one thirty two, it just doesn't.
And I mean, it might not, you know, the engineer, it's their, their guesstimate, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, but that's what they're saying it is.
So what do you gotta do to get this thing started?
I I I need a, yeah, I need a motion not to exceed eighty two thousand one hundred and thirty six thousand dollars for grant match towards the salt shed.
That's coming out of the money that we have now.
Either come, no, we don't have that money till till June thirtieth, June, July one.
Well, how do you, okay, another quick question here, how do you figure it's not costing so much if we're putting eighty two thousand dollars into it?
If you take it out of grant match, then it'll cost you eighty two thousand, if you take it out of ARPA, it will cost you nothing.
Coming out of our money, we're not getting this whole shed for nothing.
If, yeah, if you take it out of grant match, you'll be getting it for eighty two thousand, that's your, that's town cost.
The other theory is take it out of ARPA and then you're dealing with, you're dealing with six hundred thousand instead of seven hundred thousand.
And and the grant match, we're gonna be talking about a bridge grant that's putting in for, and I just didn't know if timing was right, there's sixty one thousand, you were looking one ninety eight for the, for the bridge, I'm just saying that if we took it out of grant match, there's, uh, there's in all likelihood that bridge we're not gonna hear from it before July.
August is when we're about to.
Right, it'll be after July one, so we could use that sixty, instead of taking it out of a current grant budgeted grant match, I don't know what's in the grant match budget right now.
Just trying to find it.
Yeah, and that's what, if, uh, do we have enough in the grant match budget right now that we can?
I I.
Yes.
If it was me, I'd take it out of the uh ARPA money.
Would we be better off taking it out of ARPA though, you might have got that money.
We have that money, it's sitting there, it's not like.
Was it on everybody's list?
Salt shed was online, it was on Joe's.
Yeah, the salt shed was on my list, it's just.
We gotta get it out.
We gotta get it away from where it is.
But there's, we're just, it's, it's kind of get off the pot time, yeah, it's, it's not a.
The trouble is every time you talk about the salt shed, it's gone up fifty thousand dollars.
Stop talking about it.
It's, you're not lying, it's when we started, it was what, two hundred thousand for a big shed?
Yeah, well, I don't even think it was that high, just beginning.
Every, I had the, the guy that built the TARP that builds the system, he's like, you gotta let me know, and he calls me, he's like, prices gone, he told me one time, prices going up fifteen percent.
Okay, great. Prices go up every day.
Prices are going up, but the fries are getting smaller.
Yeah. I lost it.
Not to exceed eighty.
Not, uh, motion not to exceed eighty two thousand one thirty six from whichever pot of money the board chooses.
I don't care where you're taking ARPA.
I, I, if it was me, I'd take it from ARPA, I just think it's there, it doesn't screw up.
Doesn't take away from ours.
And it.
And we were probably planning on putting some grant match anyways for ARPA.
So instead of a hundred and fifty, take the.
You put in, you put in whatever, you take the eighty, eighty two out and then put the balance in there.
It's dancing money, but it's, it it's money we have, it's.
So make that motion.
Yeah, I like that way you said it. I was trying, the way he said, and I'll second, I'll second his motion the way you said.
What he said.
What, what Joe said.
I think the motion was.
Eighty, not to exceed.
Eighty two thousand one hundred and thirty six dollars to be used from the, um.
ARPA money.
ARPA funding.
Towards the salt shed.
Is that what you need, Joe?
That's perfect.
I was seconded by Glenn, um, questions or comments on that, other than it's crazy expensive? And this isn't an official bid, we still have to go through the bid process, it could come back higher.
Yep.
Hopefully it comes back lower.
But at least you can start getting this stuff together.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the salt shed up, so you can put salt in it and.
For the, this year winner.
So you could, we could do better with our salt prices if we could get more than one load of salt a day.
Okay, um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries. Um, trash hauling bids, keep going at it.
Yeah. We're getting, we're knocking down the big ones though, so this is great, um, so we, Hubbard Brothers did get, uh, get back with me and they did provide us some disposal numbers or on, on the sheet that has the green.
Put one on your table.
Yeah, it was on the table.
It should be one that was on the table when he got here.
Oh, oh, oh.
It has green lettering in it. I was making a packet for Claire, do you wanna pack it?
Yeah, I'll give you a pack.
Well, I have it, I've never seen it. Gone through so much crap, I don't know where I got any more.
Well, they're looking in the pocket, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, Hubbard did come back with disposal numbers, uh, they offered eighty-seven dollars, uh, eighty-seven dollars a ton for our recyclables. Um, I think his name is Tim, Tim said that's the current rate, so you know how recyclables go, it's up or down, but, um, that's his current rate. With those numbers, uh, Hubbard is, Hubbard Brothers, uh, their disposal numbers are lower than Casella.
Maybe it's right there. There it is.
Uh, with, with those numbers, Hubbard Brothers is, uh, lower than Casella, um, their trucking cost is, uh, lower. Um, and the recyclables, uh, seem to be about twenty percent, twenty-seven percent lower than Casella. In some places, I don't, uh, I guess that's the, that's the gist of it, so if you look at, if you look at the sheet here, green is the, the numbers that are the lowest, the, the low bid on those items. The only hitch in the giddy up, um, is that Hubbard Brothers is saying that they're not gonna pay the, uh, uh, the disposal fee. They're saying, we're gonna set Town and Fairhaven up an account, and now you guys are responsible for paying that disposal fee account. Right now, we just pay Casella one bill hauling and disposal and it's done.
Light me in the disposal fee.
Oh, sure, it's, uh, I mean, it's, it's just cost per ton.
Who's imposing this?
The disposal fee? Uh, so the recycle center in Rutland has their fees, um, and then that's what we're paying, yeah.
Is this because Hubbard is picking it up and disposing it at Casella's and they want us to pay?
Casella.
Casella's instead of us just paying, it's like Casella's doesn't look for it, it just goes to Casella's? Okay, that's.
That's, that's what they wanna do, which is different than what we have done.
So how are they gonna control, how are they gonna control that rate?
That's my question.
If we're paying for it.
There, there, there's no way for them to control it.
So, and really this, what you've got for number, final number here is inaccurate. Because they're not putting in for deposit or disposal fees. They're showing us what it, what it's gonna cost, but they're not showing, we have no guarantee in that. Do we have a guarantee with Hubbard, with Casella for three years?
That's, I can go back, but that's what they quoted, so I'm expecting that's what they stick with for three years.
I mean, your, your, uh, disposal is only a hundred and eight, it's, it's eight dollars difference. Well, that's the, that's the, well, excuse me, that's, that's demo, I'm sorry, I mean the wrong one.
They, they really, they really do well under cardboard glass and cans.
My concern is something like that is, that fee goes up, we're stuck.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, the other, the other thing too is, personal opinion, I think this bid should have been thrown out, because the bids were due.
Yes.
Two meetings ago, these numbers from Casella have been public information, and now they just gave Joe numbers for the.
And they're slightly lower.
And, and I don't think we've, we haven't had a problem with Casella, I mean, I think you would take pretty good care of us, haven't they?
Casella has done a wonderful job, they, ev- every time we request anything, they're always right there, and they let us know when we have trouble. Uh, like if the container's getting a little wonky, hey, it needs to be fixed, do you want us to fix it? If not, you know, take care of it, so they've been wonderful to work with.
What's, your recommendation is still Casella's?
It's, I would stick with Casella, I really would, uh, you can't beat the service, the numbers go the other way, but they're iffy at best.
Yeah, but, but my feeling is, we've had good luck with them for, how long have you been doing it for us now?
They've been here since I've been here.
This is like the third contract, I think, right? At least nine years he's been with us. I'll make a motion that we.
My, my concern is I don't like the two, two separate money pots going out.
Yeah.
There's room for too much hanky panky in them.
I'll make a motion that we stick with the Casella for disposal of our landfill.
I'll second his motion.
Was it a set contract, Joe, one year, three years?
Uh, three years with a, I, I believe this one has a two-year optional extension.
That's fine.
I don't know if you need that in the motion or not, but.
For a three-year contract with the option of two more years.
Okay, uh, so motion by Jay, seconded by Glenn, to, uh, go with the Casella bid for a three-year term with an option for two additional years. Uh, questions? Uh, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Never thought I'd say this, but their service has been excellent.
Yes, it has, you know, I mean.
I give up and pull up that work and it just.
I mean, if these numbers came out at the same time, same.
It'd be a different story. Might have thought a little different.
Different of it, but.
Well, I know one thing, Casella's gonna be around.
Yeah.
Um, next one should be fairly easy, right? Water allocation approval?
Yep, so the Sherman V Allen, they're requesting an increase in their, um, per gallons, uh, daily, uh, what do you call it? Daily gallons? Consumption. Consumption. Um, they filled out all the paperwork, uh, and they paid all the fees.
And we don't have a problem with, we got plenty of the water that we need to give to them.
Yes.
Need the motion.
It's, it's for the board chair to sign.
Chair, second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Jay to authorize the water allocation. Uh, is it SB Allen, what was the?
Oh.
SB.
It's a different.
It is Sherman V Allen.
Sherman V Allen, um, and that was seconded by Glenn, uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other thing I'm, you look at there too, I believe they're gonna add on.
Oh, yeah, they're not asking for.
I brought up something on that, they're, it said future fast food, there's something going on there.
Yeah, well, they're not asking for extra water just because they, they need to flush.
They decided they wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I feel they're going, they're doing it step at a time. You're getting all their ducks in, in order, and it's tax base.
Okay.
Cause what do they, they just did the property line adjustment again, they put it back to how it was before the hotel was gonna come.
Yeah, and they, the, they just asked for a change in the way the, at, at planning, they just asked for a change in the way that, the. Land lines were delineated, so that's what.
I think they're gonna see another building there of some sort.
A form.
All right, um, appointment of treasurer, I don't.
Do we have a treasurer?
We don't, I put that there in the hopes and dreams that I find one.
Nobody is, nobody has asked or said anything about it.
I've been knocking on doors, sending emails and calling people and it's.
How is it working with, with Glenn signing?
So far, so good.
Good. We might, when we get to that portion, we gotta modify one thing.
Yeah, on the warrants, yeah. Okay, uh, we'll table it. Um, bridge grant.
Yeah, so this is, this is what I was talking about in my, uh, in my, uh, statements earlier. Um, using, so this is the bridge, this is another grant off to, uh, DOT to replace the Adam Street Bridge. This is another one of those projects, when we began ten years ago, it was six hundred thousand, uh, we're up to one point six million now for this project. Um, I took, we had the engineers update the numbers in twenty, late twenty twenty. Last time I applied, I added, uh, I forget, four percent inflation, this shows in thirteen percent inflation rate from. Twenty twenty out to twenty twenty-five, because prices are going up between now and then, and I'm expecting three-year build time, so. Um, with that, the total project cost is one, one million six hundred and fifty-five thousand one eighty-nine. Um, the state has given us two hundred thousand dollars for this project, but we still do need to have some match for the, from the town. The town has seventy-three thousand eight hundred and two dollars in bridge repair, uh, but we're still gonna need a little bit more, uh, to make this happen. So I am, if I can find my numbers. Oh. Asking for sixty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars to come from a grant match, uh, for this Adam Street Bridge grant.
What's that gonna do to our, our grant match money?
Leaves nineteen thousand.
That's what I was gonna say.
Dollars and seven, nineteen thousand seventy dollars in the account, right?
Yep, so, yeah.
That's what's gonna be there now.
That, that will, a- after you.
If we do this. No, and then, then yellow comes in and.
Ninety, ninety-six comes in July one.
Yes.
How long, I mean, this money's tied up once we do this, correct?
If this is awarded, that money is tied up, you'll know, you'll know in August, whether it's.
You'll know in August, but we have to do this in order to get the paperwork in to do it.
Deadline is April fourteenth.
So you need board approval to go along with your grant application?
Well, it's.
There's not a lot of this money.
So, I know, it's a, it's a lot of money, um, and this is, so this is where we fell down, this is where I fell down in the last grant was, I said, yeah, we got the money. But I didn't actually have a letter in the stupid thing, in the application, saying this is where the money came from, so they docked me on that.
So would you have to draw a letter up and the board has to sign it?
I'll use the minutes.
Just a minute.
I'll just use the minutes and.
So you're looking for a motion, for discussion, say, I'll, I'll make a motion that we take, uh, sixty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars from grant match. Uh, to use towards the bridge grant.
Yeah, and the, we should probably do it, um, so the, a previous board did allocate the seventy-three eight oh two from, from the bridge capital reserve fund. Yes, we should probably do that again, just to make it clean.
Okay, so you want.
Two separate?
Uh, however you wanna do it.
Matching funds of, of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars total.
Yes.
Seventy-three thousand eight oh two from the, the bridge account and sixty-one thousand one ninety-eight from the grant match. That's what my motion will be, to be used towards a bridge grant.
Perfect, for Adam Street.
Sure, for Adam Street.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Glenn. Seconded by Bob, I think the motion said, uh, motion to authorize a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, of which seventy-three eight oh two is to come from the bridge repair reserve account. And sixty-one thousand one ninety-eight is to come from the grant, uh, magic reserve account for.
Adam Street.
The Adam Street Bridge.
Adam Street Bridge.
You go with that? Uh, questions on that? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Only money.
Uh, motion carries.
Well, to me, the bridge is one of the most important things right now, because we, it's, we talked about this before, something happens to the bridge at the foot of the hill, we're screwed.
I think that could have been another Arpa one.
Yeah.
For me, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think that's one of the ones I put on.
Well, I, see, that's where I'm, that, that, the infrastructure, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Also, that should go to infrastructure, really, everything should go there.
All right.
Just to catch up, just, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but I, that's what I mean, I mean, there, there's money coming from the feds for the infrastructure, just wish they would.
Let us know.
Let, let us know so we can plan it, you know, and, and if they're doing a lot of water sewer things, we should.
Jump on everything we.
Rip up every, replace anything we can, downtown makes a lot of sense, you know, that.
I mean, that's, let's face it, that's the future, I mean, come on, we, we don't have water, we're.
Well, if we have a brand-new road, then we gotta dig it up, which is usually the case.
All right, let's, um, I so don't wanna do that. Liquor licenses, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, make sure we get them.
Let me just read right down through them.
Sure, if you wanna do one.
Okay, uh, this first one is first-class liquor license, uh, motion to approve first-class liquor license to Jekyll and Hyde Incorporated, uh, DBA Tomases.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob for the, uh, first-class liquor license for Jekyll and Hyde. Um, questions on that, if they're all in, if you're good with it, Bill, no problems? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve first-class liquor license to Scotch Hill Brewery Company.
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay to approve first-class liquor license for Scotch Hill Brewing. All set, there, no issues? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second class.
We, we had one come in this afternoon.
Okay, you have the extra one.
This is the extra one.
Got it, now, there.
For a second, second glass?
Yep, we're ready for the second glass?
Yep.
Sec, like, the liquor license, motion to approve the second-class liquor license to DG Retail LLC DBA Dollar General Store, um, eleven six sixty.
Second?
Yep.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to authorize the second-class liquor license for Dollar General, I'm not gonna read the whole thing if. Um.
We have no problems.
With any of them, okay, all right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve second-class liquor license to Walgreen Eastern Company DBA Walgreen Store, eighteen three fifty-four.
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay for the second-class license for Walgreens, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the second-class liquor license to Midway Oil DBA Fairhaven Mobile.
Second. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob for the second-class liquor license for Midway Oil, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve second-class liquor license to Global Montello Group DBA Jiffy Mart Store, number six eighty.
Okay, uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay for the second-class liquor license for Global Montello Group, uh, for Jiffy Mart. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the second-class liquor license to RL Valley Incorporated DBA Maple Fields at Fairhaven.
Rich, how about it? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rich, to approve the second-class liquor license for RL Valley, uh, which is Maple Fields. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the second-class liquor license to Stewart Shops Corp, DBA Stewart Shop, number one ninety.
Rich?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rich for the second-class liquor license for Stewart Shops, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Third class.
Motion.
Do you have one more second?
I have one more second, yeah.
Okay.
Um, motion for second-class liquor license for Brockton Corporation, that's Shaw's Beer and Wine.
Okay, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay for, uh, second-class liquor license for Shaw's. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Joe, you have for the minutes, you have all of that right?
I'm gonna send her my electronic copy, yeah.
I have one last one, the third-class liquor license, it's a motion to approve third-class liquor license to Jekyll and Hyde Incorporated DBA Tomases.
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay for third-class liquor license, uh, for Jekyll and Hyde, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries, and then there's an outside consumption permit?
Yeah, uh, so the town clerk approves the outside consumption permits.
Okay.
Um, but we just to inform the board that the, uh, Scotch Hill Brewing Company is requesting, uh, outside consumption. And at the next meeting, the board of selectmen need to actually have a policy in place for them, for these folks to have their tables outside of their, you know, facility. So that's coming up at the next meeting.
Gotcha.
And there's a whole bunch of paperwork to sign for which.
The only stipulation would be just that they, make sure they don't block the sidewalk, I mean, so there's a passable area for people to walk.
There is, but we need to have actual policy written saying, yes, you can use this space.
You're gonna draft that, put it?
Yeah, I have something.
I have a question on that one.
Start them.
Can they go, if they get permission from another building, another prop, you know, can they put tables in front of another building?
Uh, you know, I don't see why not, it's that, it's that property owner's.
Cause I know they, at one time, that's what they talked about, in, in front of bank building, maybe just putting, and there's plenty of room, I mean, the sidewalks.
Yeah, the other thing is, uh, we had that triangle cut off, they could probably put a few tables.
The other thing is, uh, we had that triangle cut off, they could probably put a few tables. The thing of it is, I don't think you're gonna put a lot of tables on the sidewalk. They may have to go out into that triangle.
And I think that's the intent, is to use the triangle, and then maybe just, like, two people tables kinda up against the buildings.
Yeah, we got that barrier and everything.
It's, we, we talked about that, but, um, if people were sitting there, we also talked about finding a Jersey barrier.
Somebody doesn't run through them?
It's, that's the worst-case scenario, if somebody got hurt, so, but it's all, you know.
Down on, what is it, Center Street, did he do that?
I don't know the one there.
See, the floor, there used to be two when you were doing tobacco. What about?
I'm gonna file them here.
What about, don't they sell cigarettes at, the truck stops and stuff like that, don't they have to have a license?
No, they get it through the state now.
Oh, they do, okay.
We don't have to do anything, we don't get anything out of it, you know, we don't have to prove. Now, do all these liquor licenses come due all the same time, every year? I didn't hear the Legion Nation, did they?
Didn't we do Legion last week?
They'll be getting theirs in, they usually do an outside consumption, they.
How about the Eagles stuff, too?
The Eagles, too.
So they got, we did, they got a few weeks to do this, is that it? Cam will mention it to her.
What is it? When's it due, boy? You had to sign these too, Bill? I thought, no, no, I mean, I thought I saw the initials where. You approved as many?
There's a lot.
Sometimes it happens over three meetings, and you're doing a few at a time. That's the outside consumption, doesn't need a signature. That's the town clerk outside consumption.
It's the third-class license.
I had to write this down, cause I can never really keep here.
Really cheap here.
There's a cheat sheet, the third-class establishments that intend to use spirits. Serve spirits. So, if you're serving spirits, you must apply for a third-class license.
Yeah, Rich, if you just wanna throw them all on that.
It's not getting very long, man.
Planning Commission discussion. I think there was some interest in members in, um, increasing this, the committee up from seven to five, and there was a recommendation that. I believe the committee supports that, the commission.
Go from five to seven? Is that a motion needed, or?
Would you, do you have the seventh, I know we have the sixth, do you have the seventh?
I think the seventh is, is Lorraine.
Cause there's an alternate?
No, she would be a voting member.
She'd be a voting member, uh, didn't, didn't we, we, we moved it from, back from five to six? About a month ago.
They have a, some, they have to have an, it can't be a tie.
Right, and this is gonna bring them back to where they won't be able to, so I think it's going back to where they started, is, is what we're saying. I'll make a motion, if you're looking for a motion to, can we do both motions to get the, back to seven members and. I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission goes back to seven members, and also, as part of that motion, that, uh, Lorraine Brown. Becomes a, the seventh member.
For three years.
For three years. For three, for a three-year term.
Is there a second? Motion by Glenn, second by Bob, to, it was, I was thinking it was still five, but it's. To, uh, make the Planning Commission a seven-member, uh, commission, and to appoint, uh, Lorraine Brown to that. Commission, for a three-year term. Questions on that? Um, all in favor of the motion? Yeah, motion carries.
I tell you one thing about that, I maybe should do that board around the table, but anyways, uh. We are running into, I wanted to, I'm gonna corner both, at some point, but, uh, we're running into a problem with our. Cut redoing, physically redoing the, uh, the zoning rights, we've got them, we've got a few questions for Ed Bull, which he has in hand now, so that's good. But one of these, we're finding out that it came from a Word document, put into a PDF, and now they're trying to do it into a Word document. And what, what Deb's finding is, she's going to have recopy the entire thing. So, because she, everything, the format's changed, every time you're trying to do a change, because it's PDF, the, from Word, from Word to PDF, the. It just, the formats change all over the place, so we, we're gonna need to recopy it, physically recopy it. And we're gonna try to get the Plan, the Rutland Regional to. We'll see how that goes. That's, that's it, Billy, like, he wants to dive in there, he'll find somebody to do it, it's just, you know, whether they're gonna charge us for that or something. I don't think they are, but certainly gonna get an argument from the representative. That's where we're there.
Letter from the, uh, for the Bombazine Watershed. Uh, this was, came from the last meeting, we asked Joe to draft a letter from the board. And Joe has done that.
Bob, I did add CCs to, um, Department of Environment, Environmental Conservation, and to the Agency of National Resource, Natural Resources.
I think that's good.
Oh, there was a typo.
I make motion, we accept the letter and send it?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, motion by Bob, second by Glenn, to, um.
I honestly don't know, I wondered about that.
Is the C capitalized in the?
The Bursellacore is the capital.
Oh, he, you have the corrected one, yeah, okay. So we have a motion, um, any questions on the motion? Everybody's fine with the content?
It's my understanding that they've already squashed this, correct? I, I, I think they got a lot of. I do believe it's already been squashed, but this is just a reinforcement.
Watched the last Castleton Select Board meeting, which they tried to squash this, and were not successful, and they will. Uh, they're gonna have in April, right after their next board meeting, they're gonna be going up to college, to bring a large group, to give time for each side. The battle, uh, at the end of the day, what they're saying is, the final decision's made up in Montpelier anyway.
Well, it is, but if, Montpelier has no interest in doing it, if the, if the people that are around it are. Are not interested in doing it.
When I looked at their board, it looked like. Two, three, four, for it. But I mean, it's still, they haven't gotten either, but it's not, not a done deal yet.
There's one coming around. Um, any other questions? Uh, all in favor? Motion carries. There was no opposition.
The last time I listened to the Castleton Town Meeting, they told them that it wasn't up to them, it's up to the.
Well, not the, not the association.
But the, but the, yeah.
The town and the association don't own the water, the state of Vermont does. Is what they, is what they told them, they said, you can do anything you want, but until, they have to have meetings up in Montpelier, or, or wherever they're, they're gonna hold those meetings, I'd be probably holding down here. But they're, they're gonna have to have meetings. Before they can make a decision, or what's gonna happen there. At that time, that's where I'd be talking about the concern of that, that that chemical.
I'm sure all this stuff will go with it.
Right, and that, and that that chemical comes out, gets into the Castle River, my concern would be, it gets into the groundwater and people's wells, and you've got another. A problem like the PFOAs that they had down country.
Anytime you use pesticides, insecticide, or, it doesn't work, it doesn't end well.
Spring in the orchard all the time.
Oh, Jesus Christ, I, I couldn't be around Dougie's Orchard when he did it, it just, I would immediately give me a headache.
Well, we were right in the middle of it all, and we used dust all the time, good.
Did you use DDT? I was just joking with Lorraine about that.
When you first started with it, yeah, you used a lot of it.
Alright, next up, we got, first right of refusal discussion for Hydro. I think the board asked Joe to look into that at the last meeting as well.
You guys did, and I didn't do anything, I'm sorry.
Table to next week.
That's fine, yeah. I, I didn't, I didn't look up any land ownership or anything on that one.
Table that, um, item F was, uh, bank documents.
Yes, so I, I wanted to wait until we had a treasurer on board, but, um, we really need to move on some of these bank documents. Um, the first is removing Suzanne DeShin. DeSharm, uh, from the credit card, and then putting me as the account owner on that. Um, and the second is allowing USDA, uh, to take payments for the bond out of the, out of the bank account. Which is typical of what we do, it's USDA just reaches in and takes that money every year, like they did with the fire trucks. So this is the program administrator for the credit card. For the board chair to sign, yeah.
You need a motion?
Do you wanna do them together, or however you wanna do it, Glenn is? Maybe do them separately, cause they're too different.
I'll make a motion that, to have Joe sign for the, as, or, Chris sign.
To change.
To change the credit card to Joe. From Suzanne, see, I'm, I'm trying to get how that motion's gotta go.
I didn't like the way that sounded.
It's a treasurer, it's a treasurer position, signature usually, or is it a clerk?
No, no, it's just, this is just, the clerk had the, had the credit card, but this would be the, it was a town card, we just need to remove Suzanne from the town card. And place, we need somebody else on the card.
Basically, it's a name change.
So I think the motion is to, um, add Joe as the program administrator for the credit card, and remove Suzanne as the current. Signer of the account.
That sounds good, yeah.
Uh, motion by Glenn, second by Bob. Uh, discussion on that?
What's this card used for? That just, off-the-cuff stuff that comes up during the, on a business day, or?
Yeah, um, and this, to circle it back to the auditor, um, right now, the credit card is like the, the last res- last resource for, for purchases. Which has led into a little bit, just for some background, has led into a little bit of conflict, um, with purchases. I know the police chief, he asked, oh, police chief is here, he's like, I need to buy this, and I wanna use the card, it's cheaper. And I said, no, it's the last resource, so we ended up paying a hundred bucks extra for, for a product. Then we could've bought it instead of online, using a credit card, so, as we go through our, our policies, this is gonna be something I bring up, so yes, for purchases.
It's where I used to work, we had, we were all assigned to what we call the P Card, we had a certain amount of money each month that we were allowed to spend on that card. We were able to take advantage of discounts and things like that. And it was. Credit, you know, everybody's, there was like three or four people that audited the whole program every month, so there was no misuse, but. Seemed like that would save money, quite a, you know, inconvenience. But if it's audit, you know, audited and stuff and.
And you can control the P Cards better, you can lock them down to vendors, they only work at, say, Abashans or Gilmore's, and that's.
Well, if it happened more than once or twice, it is a lot.
So I thi- I think we should move forward with this tonight, but at least, it should be something to look at, as we look at those financial. I think we could save.
We gotta do that, because.
Okay, so, um, all in favor of that motion? Okay, that motion carries. This is for Chris as well. Joe, you'll fill in the rest of the information for me?
Pre-authorized payments? I'll make a motion that, uh, we have the chair sign the document that lets Joe. Sign the authorization for the US.
It would be for US.
The US Department of Agricultural and Development. Authorization agreement for pre-authorized payments.
And that's for the bond payment, as it comes out, USDA will just take their payment.
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, second by Jay. I think the motion was to authorize the chair to sign the agreement for pre-authorized payments, uh, with the US Department of Agriculture, Enrolled, Enrolled Development.
Sorry, guys, sorry, his name is not signing in there, it's just you signing.
Uh, any questions on that? And then, this is standard, Joe, you said?
Yeah, um, when we paid off the fire truck, this was, it's the same thing, USDA just, they just took their money and, yeah, whatever time of year they take it.
Um, all in favor of the motion? Motion carries. So we've got a fair amount of board appointments to make, uh, the first one is the pound keeper. There's a couple options here, um, and I believe currently it's Bill, the police chief. Got a motion by Bob, second by Jay, to appoint, uh, Police Chief Humphreys as the pound keeper. You're good with that? Uh, discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries, uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission member?
Motion to, to appoint Bob Richards?
Second.
Uh, motion by Jay, seconded by Glenn, to appoint Bob Richards to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, uh, questions on that? All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission alternate member?
Make a motion to appoint Rose, Roseanne Van, uh, Van Lu.
Second.
Motion by, um. I'm already getting, it's late, motion by Jay, seconded by Glenn, I was gonna do it reverse, to appoint Roseanne Van. Motion by Jay, seconded by Glenn, I was gonna do it reverse, to appoint Roseanne Van Lou as the alternate to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've gotta let.
Yeah, please, I don't have to spell my last name.
I'll send you, I'll send you, I'll send you everything. I'll send you electronic, it'll make life easier.
Uh, Rutland Transportation Council rep. Got a name there for.
Make a motion to, uh, appoint Cindy Adams as the Transportation Council rep.
Is there a second?
Motion.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to appoint Cindy Adams as the, uh, Transportation Council rep. Questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. The next one is the SWAC representative.
Motion to appoint Bonnie Rosati as the, uh, Solid Waste Representative or?
There's a paperwork to sign on this one too.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to appoint Bonnie Rosati as the SWAC representative. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, tree warden?
Motion to appoint Phil Standard. Is that junior or senior?
Junior.
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 Second.
Motion by, uh, Jay, seconded by Glenn to appoint Phil Standard Jr. to the, as the tree warden. Questions on that?
What's the tree warden do?
Uh, so under VSA, he'll come and look, if there's dispute, he'll come and take a look and see if, if trees can be cut. Uh, mostly it revolves around like fruit trees, fruit bearing trees. If there's something in the right of way and a landowner doesn't want the town to cut it, he can call the tree warden, he can make a decision.
It's pretty archaic for.
A little.
Kinda like where coal and.
A little higher up the fencey or.
Yeah, I know, I know, I, fence viewers my favorite.
Oh, shit, yeah.
Um, all in favor of Phil for that position?
Aye.
Motion carries. Weir of Coal with a.
Yeah.
Different spelling.
Weir of Chris.
Yeah. I don't need that help right now. Bacon, but it's not required and we didn't have.
Can we, can we just take that off? Can we just make a motion, take it off if it's not required?
That'd be great, and then we won't have to go back through this next year.
We'll make a motion that we take off the weir of the coal.
Second.
Weir of the propane, weir of the fuel.
Year, I mean, I see years ago when you used to give stuff out to people, but.
I would agree. Uh, so motion by Jay to remove that as a, uh, appointed position. That was seconded by Glenn.
Hmm.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, representative to the Otter Creek Communications District?
I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy Richards as a representative to the Otter Creek Communication District. The Cud.
Is there a second?
Go ahead, Ben.
I'll second it. Yeah, do something.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to appoint Tracy Richards as the representative to the Otter Creek Communications District. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Cemetery Committee?
Motion to appoint Mary McNeil, Danny Roberts, Matthew McNeil, and Lorraine Brown to the Cemetery Committee?
Second.
I, there are two others that I ju- I just got the list.
Okay.
Scott Fulmsby and Paul Laramie are also on the Cemetery, wish to be on the Cemetery Committee.
Paul Laramie?
Paul?
Paul.
And Paul Laramie?
There's no limit, is there?
No. No.
No.
Okay, a lot of those.
Very interesting.
Second. Somebody second, I guess I do.
Yeah. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay to appoint those six, uh, folks to the Cemetery Committee.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Um, Economic Development Committee?
Motion to appoint Glenn, Cindy, Judy, and Joe.
Did I miss?
Don't know, I don't know their last name, so that's what we're doing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jay, seconded by Bob to appoint Glenn, Travers, Cindy.
Richard.
Richard. Judy.
Sutherland.
Sutherland and Joe. Gotcha. Okay, um, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Emergency Management Coordinator?
Make a motion to appoint Jim Heller as our Emergency Management Coordinator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to appoint Jim Heller as the Emergency Management Coordinator. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Um, Energy Committee?
Make a motion to nominate Chris Stanton, Mike Standard, Neil Robinson, and Bob Richards to the Energy Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay to appoint Chris Stanton, Mike Standard, Neil Robinson, uh, and Bob to the Energy Committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I just, uh, in all fairness, I never did talk to Mike, but he doesn't, if he didn't wanna come, I guess he just won't show up.
Yeah.
Sometimes he's interested and sometimes he's busy.
Yeah.
There was another name I heard that was gonna, wanted to be on it.
Oh, yeah, Bob Dollar.
I thought Bob Dollar was.
Oh.
His name hasn't appeared here, but I thought he was already on it.
Getting out of.
He's coming to it, we can.
Can I, can I, um, modify my motion?
Sure.
I'd like to, uh, modify that to add Bob Dollar, so it's.
That's my, that's my bet.
Your second?
I'll second, that's fine.
You're fine with that? Um.
I'll send this to you.
So we're just gonna amend that, that last motion?
Yep.
Yeah.
Not to confuse you more, but.
It'll be.
Sorry.
I think I added that part.
Okay, uh, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's, that passes, we're adding Bob to that. Uh, fence viewers? This is another not required, but.
I think we should just keep it because of the fact, there, you do get, you get a conflict.
Make a motion to appoint Bob Richards and Claire Stanley as fence viewers?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay to appoint Bob and Claire as fence viewers? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Get down there.
Might be the first argument.
Motion.
You think you need an alternative?
Yeah.
Mo- motion to appoint Jim, uh, for Fire Department Officers, Jim Heller as chief, Tom Thuciel as First Assistant Chief, and Don Proctor as Second Assistant Chief.
Okay, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rich?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, uh, to appoint Jim, Tom, and Don as officers for the, uh, Fire Department? Uh, any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Health Officer?
Motion to appoint John Lulek as the Health Officer?
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to appoint John Lulek as the Health Officer? Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Nobody for the assistant?
No, I, I did reach out to a young lady and she wasn't interested.
Okay, um, inspector, inspect, Inspector of Lumber?
Motion to appoint Ray Phillips as the Inspector of Lumber?
And Ray's okay with that?
I was gonna say, I, I never could get ahold of Ray either, but.
He'll be fine with it.
Yeah.
Uh, was there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob to appoint Ray Phillips as the Inspector of Lumber? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we, uh, we did Lorraine, but not, so we've gotta do Patrick.
Patrick.
So Planning Commission?
Yeah, motion to appoint Patrick Fraser to a three-year term, uh, in the Planning Commission?
Second.
Okay, um, motion by Glenn, seconded by, uh, Rich to appoint Pat Fraser to a three-year term? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Rec Committee is not active, right? Is that?
Do it, Nicole.
Nicole is active and she has folks that she, that they do get together and they discuss, uh, they talk about rec items, but it's not, it's not an official thing, yeah, it's just kind of loosely together.
And they're fine working that way?
I guess so, yeah.
Um, anything from parking lot? Items or?
We can take the Adam Street Bridge off, right? Isn't that on there still?
Well.
Because we, we did the, we did the thing for the.
Yeah, I don't have the money yet though, Jay.
Right.
So you wanna leave it on there?
Okay. So I'm going, right?
And a meter changes, he said he had just a few left.
About twenty-seven, I, I, he may need us to.
Push them along.
Get, get that over the goal line with the last.
The town plan.
I understand the situation, Austin, somehow, if they're under a trailer.
Yeah, it's not right time to do it now.
Yeah, but should that?
Should it?
Should we start, start the process?
Start the process.
I think.
Get a, get a letter ready to go.
Say, honor about the first of May, this is gonna have to be done or something like that.
Yeah.
Send it out on the fifteenth of April.
Right after taxes, yeah. By the way, guys, um, so what we were, what we were hoping the board would do is set a, uh, like quarterly fee, fine.
Yep.
Um, so it's, if you don't have it done by this day, you're getting this much a day, a hundred dollars a day or something.
Put it on the agenda for next.
So we'll have to look at that in the ordinance.
Yeah, is the one where?
It, it says that you cannot bar us from, from entering for this kind of thing, but there's really no teeth to it.
Is there, is there a fine structure on over like you could issue a municipal violation?
There is, in, in the water, both water and sewer.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
You're sending a violation, and if you get it, things, we'll dismiss it.
Yep.
So if we sent something to them by the middle of April saying it had to be done by May first and, or the final start.
Or at least get the appointment.
Get the appointment by May first.
Yeah, I just don't understand why people don't wanna get it done.
Only think their, their bill's gonna go way up.
Well, I gotta be honest with you.
Too bad.
My place down here on the side street was the first two meters they put in in town. And I, I can't say anything but good.
I, I haven't seen mine at all.
And if you're getting meter readings every two weeks to know if you have a leak, I think that's.
Exactly.
I think, I think that's a plus, that is a big plus.
It's a big plus.
So you'll start with a letter and then if you need the board to.
We'll have to formalize, yeah.
Formalize it, which does take time, so I mean, you're gonna.
I'll, I'll bring it, I'll bring a draft to the board in, at the next meeting, April five, because this shouldn't be too bad. Uh, propose a fine and then send out letters saying.
Let's look up in the ordinance and see what the fine says in the ordinance.
Yeah.
And I thought past board, we've already set letters, and then we got into the COVID and we, we backed, backed away because we had some folks that we already sent one letter, it won't be the first letter.
All right. Well, we've got two pages today.
Yeah, don't do that.
Board roundtable. For roundtable, for board?
Well, getting back to the hydro project, I guess, I, I went down, I hooked that area over.
Yeah.
It's quite a, it's quite an area in question there. Um, there is some possibilities there. You know, we'll have to see what, I need, I really need to look at that study sometime and.
It's, it's, the town has it.
It's on, yeah, it's on the town.
And it's on, it's online, it's on the website, although.
I used, I can print a copy.
Although that website is top of my list for our money.
Man, it's bad.
No water wheel or something down there on the side of it.
Yeah, there is.
Piece of.
Yep, piece of the water wheel.
Yeah. Anything else?
Interesting.
No, it's definitely a, could be a cool project.
Another roundtable thing I maybe I have is, uh, is, uh, some of the road maintenance and street maintenance, there's, there's tons of areas where there's minor stuff that can be done that wouldn't cost a lot of money. But would really prolong the life of our blacktop tremendously. And, uh, I think that's, we need to really work on that this year.
I believe in the crack filling.
Crack filling is great, but the water has to have a place to go before, otherwise it's gonna sit there and it's gonna find its way in.
Right, yeah.
You know, um, there's, but there's many areas. And then another, another thing I have is, uh, sidewalks along on some of the side streets. I saw them, our old slate and, and I don't know if we need a long-term plan to, Grape Street comes in mind, there's a one area there that's really messed up.
I know, for instance, Scottsdale, because I drive there all the time, the edges are peeling out. I don't know, I know we're planning on working on that eventually, but it's falling apart pretty quickly.
Yeah, there's just so many areas where the, the water can't get off the road, can't get to the catch basins. And it breaks the pavement up.
All right, um, Jay?
Yeah, um, I was up by the trailer park on the Airport Road today. And that first guy in the front there, there's two of them, and there's so much stuff around there again. And as you look down the roadway, it looks like it's a throwaway area for a dump. It's really, really bad.
I just wrote more about motions up there.
Good.
The problem tenant is not there anymore, but he's.
Yeah.
So I know that the one guy across the road is starting to pull. Not that he's any better, but he's been pulling out as much as he can.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna follow up and I might send some more tickets out.
Okay, that's good.
And I talked to him the other day, so he was pulling the race cars out of there that were in the first lot and trying to bundle it up, but our version of what it should only versus there.
Yeah, different to you.
This has been a year-long battle, but I didn't, I didn't. You get a little progress and then you go ten steps backwards.
And then the other spot I noticed today too was the corner of First Street in Washington. Uh, the house across the road from St. Mary's Church or School, there's a pile of stuff up there. There's snowmobiles and there's lawn mowers and there's quite a pile of junk there.
First place right on the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and then I touched base about the wings, taking out the truck. What's happening with the charger for cars, electric charger?
Uh, that guy, so it was, this guy received grant funding to install chargers. Uh, his project got slowed up because there was a, a lack of just electronic parts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he's, I talked to him, it's been a couple of weeks now, uh, he said they do intend to still install those this summer.
Okay.
But, yeah, they were slowed down.
So I just had one question on that, was, are they putting it where the town is redoing the parking lot? Is that gonna affect that land?
No.
Is it going on the other side or they're going where they?
It's going where the old one's.
Yeah, that's all wired there anyways, right?
I'm sorry?
That's all wired for those at that spot.
It is, there's a space there, they will have to put in a, uh, some kind of converter box.
How much is that gonna cost?
Nothing, it's free. But, so what GMP was doing, G, when GMP installed their chargers, they were charging the town a fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now they'll, these new people will pay us. And they're doing it for free.
I'm just wondering if there shouldn't be some in the parking lot.
I, I do know that the people, uh, by the Dunkin' Donuts down there are talking, doing a revamp and putting some electric chargers at their, at their place. I don't, I'm.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if they wanted to put some in the parking lot and it wouldn't screw things up, why not?
Like Bill said, you just have to really know what your dig, what your design's gonna be before you put them in. Because you don't wanna get them in.
Oh, no, yeah.
And then have them take them out again. And then one more, I've got the north end of the park. Couldn't they, uh, clean that up a little bit and start getting it back in the shape?
North side.
Right here.
Black plastic in the dirt.
Oh, yeah, they need to get that.
It's a mess, you know, and it shouldn't never have been dug up to begin with, but. And then they've got so many places where they pushed the snow up with the bucket loader. And it's a mess. It's over here at the, uh, Memorial Park, they got some wicked piles.
They got some mounds of dirt there, don't they?
And, you know, and I saw out front where they looked like they raked off some of it on the side on the sidewalk, And, you know, and I saw out front where they looked like they raked off some of it on the side on the sidewalk, and then they're running over it with the, or the Bobcat to squash it down. Instead of picking it up, so that's all I got.
Um, one, I, I sent Jenny a, a question about, uh, about the way we do the, uh, the medical insurance funds. Do we have to separate those by, by, um, I mean, it's all the same medical insurance, but they're separated, she's got three different line items she has to take it from. To, uh, when she has to add to the, add to the thing, does that make any sense and is that worthwhile?
Uh, I will ask Jenny.
Yeah, I sent her, I sent her, I just said, is that, does that make sense?
One oh, two oh, three oh?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And does it, is that necessary? Just seems like a.
Um.
What's that called? HSA fund?
Yeah.
Um, anything else?
Nope.
Uh, just, uh, a few, uh, there's a pothole out on West Street at the bridge. And you're, and you can almost lose a, a tire in, and I, I know I, I, I mentioned something to Joe about it, but.
Yeah, I did.
It's a, and I know it's a question of is it, is it the state or is it us, but I'm just saying, first car goes through and, and, and takes out. A tire.
Oh.
We're, we're, regardless, you know, a little bit of cold patch in there would save a whole lot, that hole's getting pretty deep. Um. Also got a call from, uh, one of our taxpayers about, one, a couple of weeks ago on a Thursday, about the plowing, the, the sidewalks when there wasn't any snow. Was, was looking for an explanation and, and says, okay, uh.
I saw the picture of that.
Um, I had, John Lulek couldn't make it tonight, but he wanted me to bring up two different things, the, um, Adam Street House that is in the, like court system and, uh. And to make sure that we, that we weren't losing them on our radar. And the other was the Green Mountain Mobile Manor for, on multiple things, and I, I didn't know, Joe, if you had.
Oh.
An update on those two.
Sure, and, and I have an update on the snow plowing too.
Good.
Um. Because I saw, thought the same thing, it didn't look like that much snow. Um, but, uh, the thought was that, um, you know, as the guys, if they were, if they were clearing snow in the, uh, in the street, sometimes that does push snow. Um, up onto the sidewalks, which would need to be cleared. And it's not, it's not always as simple as, well, I don't have any snow on my, on my sidewalk, there may be snow, you know, depending on how it's plowed, there may be piles elsewhere. So, the thought was, well, there's snow, and there's not a policy to say, don't plow the sidewalk if there's that much snow. Or do I not plow the sidewalk if it's that much snow? Do I plow the sidewalk if I have this much snow? So, the thought was, they were providing a service to the town and they were trying to do a good service. They saw snow and they felt that they should remove it, um, which I have to commend them for. It, was it not a lot of snow? No, it wasn't. But, um, it's not as simple as there's not snow here, because in other places, there may have been small piles based on, uh, plowing. Um. For Green Mountain Mobile, those folks still, they, uh, they do owe the town a whole bunch of money, I wanna say. Uh, north, thirty, thirty thousand and north of that at this point, their, their water bills have been about nine thousand dollars a quarter and they're getting ready to get another one. Um, and they still owe us for back taxes that they haven't paid since, uh, two or three years now. Um, there's, we don't have any other choice other than sell the property and shut off their water. It's just what. It's just what it is at this point.
I don't know, new, they received almost sixty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to pay their water bills. And they, they've got a leak somewhere and they just.
They still didn't pay them or did they?
No, the, the ARPA money paid for it, um, almost sixty grand in back water bills. But they, they've got a leak and they just can't get it fixed and they're turning through nine thousand dollars of water a quarter.
We, we reached out, we worked with, uh, the young lady pretty extensively to get, to make sure she got that money. Uh, and then hasn't done anything since, so it's, we're, we've done pretty much everything we could at this point.
Then to get somebody in there to listen for a water leak, like everybody else does.
It's gotta be there somewhere.
Oh, yeah. Probably more than one. Trouble with that though is. Not our trouble, it's their trouble. It's private line. So, our line stops here.
But if we knew, if we had somebody that comes in and helps here, they couldn't give her the name of the guy and let her hire him?
We could, but I, I tell you honestly, I've been banging my head against the wall helping this, this group for a long, long time, and they just.
They don't care.
Personal opinion, no, I don't think they do. I, they've, they've not paid their taxes on water in a long time. That's not fair to everybody else, you know, you guys pay your taxes on water. So, that, that's coming to a head very shortly. Um, and, uh, over on Adam Street, uh, those folks are in the court system now, they like, like Green Mountain Mobile Manor. Um, we worked with them for many years to try to get them to clean up their mess, um, to the point where there are rats and, and, and people sending in letters and it. I had one guy almost on the verge of tears in my office, just 'cause it was so bad.
Just dry dumb biter.
Yeah.
And they shuffled things around, but it doesn't look much better. So, they're in the system and they're, I mean, it's ten thousand dollars a day once they're found guilty, and it's, it's not a joke. So, it's.
It was, there was one person mentioned garbage complaint to me also around Grape Street, but you are aware of that, so.
Grape Street and Furnace, there was those.
Furnace one, yeah, it is.
I've, I've snapped some pictures of both of those and we'll be sending them letters, asking them to get that stuff out of there before we have to do any of the. Rest of, I'll get that to Bob.
Um, the only thing I had, Joe, um, can you send the existing union contracts out to the full board so that they can review them before we meet up? And discuss contact, contract negotiations?
Yes, um. The police union did get in touch yesterday or today, um, he was wondering if the board would mind doing Zoom negotiations. Is that a problem with the board?
Kind is for me.
We would, well, we would do it here in the office.
Yeah, we could, you could come to meet here in the office and Joe could get.
Yeah, as long as it's not a problem for.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, everybody else set with that? So, the warrants, um, it used to be, you know, Glenn would just read the, the warrant, but because Glenn is signing the checks now. It's been recommended that Glenn abstain from approving the warrants, just because he's a signer on. The check. So, Bob wants to take over that. Make him the assistant partner. There you go.
Uh, motion to pay the payroll warrant of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second. Okay, motion by Bob to authorize payroll warrant, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents? Um, a second by Jay?
Yeah.
Questions on that? No? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um.
All abstain.
Okay, so motion carries.
Motion to do the general fund warrant of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Uh, mo- uh, second.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Jay for the general fund warrant, four sixty-six, seven hundred and sixteen thousand and twenty-eight cents. Questions?
That was, that's not all, part of that is the sewer payment on the, on the plant?
Oh, yeah. A lot of that. Um, that's engineering for that as well as paying for nail and ring to build, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and six dollars was the wa- the upgrade, that payment. And then there's another thirty-four thousand of engineering money that went out that time. Blue Cross was fourteen thousand. Uh, generator was twenty-two thousand and retirement money went out, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, so.
Just so it doesn't look, just so it doesn't look like it's expenditures, that, you know, I mean, it's expenditure, but what I'm saying is, at least they know. That we're not buying equipment.
We're not, we're not tricking out our.
Right, right.
And the checkbook balance is.
Um, all in favor of that one?
Yeah.
Motion carries, who won abstain?
Uh, checkbook balance is four hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and five cents.
Second.
You don't have to say that, that's just.
No, it just, yeah. Well, I gotten you.
Yeah, I know, I'm pretty good at it.
Well, I'm doing it just because it's easier for her, you ain't gotta write three letters. Or just put a J, whatever.
Alright, uh, motion to adjourn.
Just gotta go on somebody's folder.
Whoa, look at that.
Yep.
At ten twenty.
Nice.
What were you supposed to?
Oh, look at that, man.
Right on that, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay to adjourn at ten twenty.